And for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and if the new council elect can stay standing, I'm going to give you your oath. So everyone, please raise your right hands. Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, as well as the Charter and Ordinances of the Town of Tallinn, and to faithfully discharge your duties as a member of the Tallinn Town Council to the best of your abilities. So help you God.
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations. At this time, we're going to move on to item number five. Can I have a nomination for chairperson?
If anyone want to unmute themselves and make a nomination to chairperson.
Have to ask. Yeah.
Kathy, you want to ask that again?
Yes, can I please have a nomination for a chairperson?
Yeah, she doesn't sound.
Um, I'm gonna nominate Katie Star-Darner for chair. Can I have a second?
Jacob Maria, second motion.
And could I have a show of yays?
Yeah.
Yeah. And any nays? Okay, congratulations, Katie. I'm handing it over to you. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody. Thanks.
Thanks, Kathy.
Kathy, can we just put on the record that Colleen was sworn in earlier today?
Yes, absolutely. Today around 11:30 a.m. I went to Colleen's house. She was under the weather and I swore her in in her front doorway. She is sworn in. She's all set. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good night.
She's having, obviously, technical growth.
She's got a bug in her computer.
Yeah, yeah, it's all, it's all bugging out.
Yeah.
Uh, the next item on our agenda is the election of vice chair. Is there a nomination for vice chair?
I nominate Jacob Murray for vice chair. Second.
Thank you. I'm sorry, who did the nomination?
Yeah.
Joe did the nomination.
Yeah, thank you.
Seconded. Sorry, Lisa, I'll try to.
That's okay.
Walk you through this tonight.
I don't have time yet.
Absolutely. Um, Colleen, is your technology working?
Yeah, I know where I'm at.
Yeah, okay. So all in favor of Jacob for vice chair?
Aye.
Any nays? So that is unanimous. We have elected a chair and vice chair. Congratulations. Um, the next item on our agenda is discussion and adoption of a meeting schedule for our regular meetings going forward. Brian, do you want to walk us through this?
I sure do. Uh, after tonight's meeting, our next meeting, our next regular meeting, should you guys decide to have them on Tuesdays, would be November 28th. Unfortunately, on the 28th, um, myself, as well as my financial director, and I'd like to introduce Lisa Hancock over there as our, she's our financial director, um, and, and a very, very important person in these special meetings. We will both be away at a conference that night. And we don't arrive back until the next day when the morning is the actual, um, both days happening. So we're, we're away. It's too important of a meeting for us to just postpone or just skip. Um, so we're asking to have it rescheduled. Uh, the Monday and the Wednesday are problematic, the 27th and the 29th, and so that will use the 30th, Thursday, um, open for us. So I would respectfully request that council consider, um, moving then November 28th meeting to November, Thursday, November 30th. Um, so then, uh, myself and our.
Thank you.
Setting the time as well.
Same, same. If that's all right, it's up to you guys.
Are we, is that, um, if we change it with less than 30 days, does that make it a special meeting?
No, I don't think it is.
Okay, so it would be a change to our regular meetings?
Yep.
Okay. Are there any, does anybody have anything to say about that? No? Okay, so.
Did you make a motion to do that?
If you approve the schedule as it's.
As the whole schedule, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That becomes a regular meeting.
Okay, great. So we're going to keep going through the rest of the schedule that's part of our agenda. Brian, do you want to keep walking us through the 2024 dates and 2025 dates?
Yes, attached in your package are the, uh, meeting dates for the next two years. Welcome, everybody. And, and those are typically, I, I, since I've been here, I think maybe we canceled one ones in the summer, possibly. It's very rare that we make adjustments from here. Uh, with the hybrid option, you can attend in person or in hybrid, as you're seeing in, in grand fashion today. Uh, so, so these are the dates, should you choose to pick them, or wherever you go as a council, I have the option to make them whenever you see fit. And, uh, I work at your place, so when you tell me to be here, I will. As suggested, the Tuesday nights, I've worked here for as long as I've known. That's up to you. Okay. Chairperson, Star-Darner, and chairperson, Jacob, vice chair, Martin, so you guys decide.
Um, so I thank you, first of all, thank you very much for highlighting the holidays for our notice. Are there any objections? Does anybody want to talk about Tuesday night? I mean, this has been. The night we've had it for years. So any concerns? That would, yeah.
I know if we changed it, it would affect all the other boards as well, right?
Absolutely, yes. The panic on the staff faces. It's entertaining tonight.
I guess my question was, you've got meetings like day after Christmas or Wednesday and also more on Christmas Eve. I, I don't know, has the council ever met on Christmas Eve? I don't know.
They had best not.
Okay. I'm totally buying that.
Yes. I was just wondering. We'll approach those things, um, together and become the most reasonable option. Have that conversation.
Unless we come in and decorate.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any objections to 2025 dates either while we're looking at them? Okay. So is there a motion then to approve the proposed dates in our agenda with the change that the next regular town council meeting will be Thursday, the 30th of November?
Yep, I moved the adoption of the schedule as point in section seven of the agenda.
With the change for.
With the change for November 30th.
Is there a second? Thank you. So Chris made the motion, Jen seconded. Is there any further discussion? Colleen, are you?
Yes, can you hear me, Katie?
Yes, I can.
I am so sorry. I apologize. I was on, I was trying to nominate you, Katie, and I had no tech, like no sound or anything. So first, I just want to say congratulations, Katie and Jacob. I am so sorry I missed that. And I, I know I can't vote now, but I totally support both of you and your new roles. Um, but yeah, I'm good. With what we're voting on, so I'm here for the rest of the night on my phone.
Thanks, Colleen. So because we are hybrid, we're going to do, um, roll call votes, which, um, takes a little bit longer, but we'll, we'll just go through. So, Colleen, the motion before us is to approve the minutes with the modification for 11:30. Would you like to, would you like to start voting?
Yeah, sure. I, I say yes to it. I make the motion.
Thank you. Chris?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Alex?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
I'm also an ayes, that is unanimous. Well done. We did it really quick. The next item on our agenda is eight, rules of procedure. Brian, you want to take that off?
Certainly. Second. So these are the rules of procedures, and it's three or four pages I went through today. Um, and it basically defines out everything that we do here, uh, consistently, the Robert's rules are more tailored, uh, towards the town. I'm not going to bore you, uh, with running through each and every one of these things at this moment. However, uh, I, I ask you all to read them, uh, given that we already have it. If you haven't, sorry, I read them. Um, and it really gives you a good layout of how the meetings operate. The good news is, um, there's not too, not too many people new to this. Joe, I know you were, uh, here once before, but, um, Alex, I believe that you knew this, as was I, and one year and five months ago, this was completely foreign to me as well. Uh, still kind of is. So, um, give it a read and, uh, we are pretty, uh, really good about following them. Some boards and commissions are somewhat lax. I'm very proud to say that we do a great job here in regards to the form and keeping things in an orderly and polite manner.
Are there any questions about the rules and procedure that were outlined? Colleen, do you have anything to say about rules and procedure?
No, I think I'm good with them.
The one thing I would say is that, uh, the previous council did revisit this, um, in February of 2022, and it did pass that by person council unanimously. So, um, that being said, is there a motion to approve the rules and procedures as outlined in agenda item eight?
I'm in.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion before we vote? Okay. Colleen, I'd like to start with you.
Aye.
Thank you. Chris?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Alex?
Joe? Jacob?
Hi.
I'm also an ayes, that is unanimous. You doing okay, Lisa? We're doing good. All right. It's always good when she tells me we're doing a good job. So the next item is our town manager introduction. He's already started introducing himself, but I'm sure he has more to say. So, Brian, please.
Uh, well, uh, thank you, councilperson, Star-Darner. Um, as you know, I'm, I'm, I'm Brian Vogel. And, um, I've only been a town manager here for one year and five months. Uh, so it was all new to me and I am still learning. I am born and raised in this great town of Tallinn. I moved here, I say, I moved here in 1969. Uh, I'm home. I have a daughter. She's in our school system proudly. Uh, and I have an elderly mother who lives on her own here in town as well. So I am deeply invested and care very much for this town. Uh, been being here my whole life, fortunately or unfortunately, I know so many of the players and so many of the players know me. I was very lucky to get this job and be hired by the previous council, who, by the way, set the bar very high and hope we can follow that. I'll get into more into that in a, in a moment. Um, some of you may know that I had a career as a police officer for 24 years in Hartford, but it wasn't, um, your typical just walking around giving tickets type of police career. Uh, most of my career, the, the majority of it was spent, uh, major crimes, homicide, or internal affairs, investigating police corruption, um, and a lot of political and community liaison and a lot of communications as well. And many of those roles all kept into one at the same time. Uh, what I take from that career is that I've seen the best in people and I've seen the worst in people. Um, and where that lands me here with, with all of you is there's nothing you can say or do to upset me. I promise, uh, that at the end of each meeting, this is all just business. I've been through meetings that are going to be so much worse than anything we could imagine here. So I don't, I try not to get, uh, rarely, I don't even, I, I don't have the ability to get emotional anymore. Um, so I'm, I'm calm. And again, well, we can have it out and when the meeting's over, I promise I'm going to, uh, like it just as much as I did when I walked in here. Uh, and I take the attitude of I am the luckiest person in this room, the luckiest person in the building, uh, to have this, this job. I did it this afternoon. At the end of my day, I walked out the front door, looked up and down the green and thought I am the luckiest person to have this job. Uh, and I take it to heart and I care. I try to surround myself with staff who care and just care, and you're going to get to know a lot of them. Uh, I want to, I want to first introduce Lisa Pascozzi, who's our clerk over here. Uh, she will be here, uh, with us, uh, every meeting, uh, clerking and taking our minutes, and she does just an absolutely fantastic job, and we are incredibly lucky, uh, to have her. I do have some staff in the room. I, I introduced Lisa Hancock, uh, as, as one of our staff. There's Bruce back there, Bruce Watt is in charge of our, uh, recreation department. He does an amazing job and that it. And then, of course, Sarah Beth Nivison here, um, a classmate through school. Uh, and my right-hand person here, she is a, um, confidant and my confidential secretary in the backbone, uh, of what happens in our office. You're going to meet, um, Chief Laitel, uh, our public safety director, Beth Bellaty, human services, uh, our library, if you meet our current library director, but she is literally, uh, retiring, but she'll be back here until, on a limited basis, until we, uh, govern them. Beth Bellaty does an amazing job down in human services. Uh, each of these people I'm going to get in front of you at some point, um, during council, and they'll be able to tell you everything, uh, that they do. Dave Corbren and Jim Pack went down in our buildings department. They have changed the building department. I built a house here in Tallinn, uh, when we didn't have a, uh, building inspector, and I was very thankful for that while building the house. I promise you are not. Uh, so we have, the, the, I know many builders in town, all of them say what a great position our building department is now. How much different it has changed and how much more positive it is just walking in the door. I can't say enough of the work they do. We have a grants director, Megan Masa, who does an amazing job. Uh, she is also learning to be our project manager for building something. She's the one who's going to oversee the project. She's currently overseeing, uh, the firehouse on Gearing Road, which has been, um, quite a roller coaster. Uh, by no fault of hers, by any stretch of the imagination. You met Kathy Potagon, our, our wonderful clerk. Um, she goes above and beyond. Uh, she, she is the, just a, really the support system for our staff here. Um, in a social sense, everyone goes to her. Uh, you Bruce Watt, I, I already introduced, and we have Scott Lappin, who, uh, does our DPW, uh, is the director of our DPW. He does an amazing job and I'm, and I'm so, uh, lucky to have him, uh, here and, and I couldn't be happier with all these. And I say this coming from, again, police land, uh, but I was also a state employee. So I have, uh, previous town, uh, municipal experience, working with employees and state employees. It's not even close. The town of Tallinn employees are so much, uh, more willing to go above and beyond. I can't, they all wear different hats. Mike Wilkinson is our HR director. He's, uh, you can't see him, but he's on Zoom right now. He, he, just for an example, he's, he's our HR director, but he's also handles all of our, uh, trash and recycling and everything to do with that. You should be fortunate that we won't have to see a contract for five years as it was renewed, uh, recently. So we won't have to get into it too much, although our budget time will certainly, uh, take a look at it. So everyone, everyone wears, um, different hats here and they go above and beyond. But if I can say, you know, we're all very protective of each other. So if you're going to, if you need something of them, I ask not in like a controlled manner, just in a respectful manner, just kind of come through my office. At some point, you'll have a before, if you need something where you're just going to be dealing with them, uh, directly. But in, in the time being, um, they've all asked, you know, to try to follow it through myself or, um, Sarah Beth, uh, there. I was, um, I was hired here and tasked with maintaining public trust and public confidence, and you'll hear me talk about that a lot, and staying above everything and don't get dragged down into the arguments and working together. And it's something that I hold very close to my heart. And I will have lots of conversations, uh, with all of you, uh, in regards to that in the most minorist of senses and the calmest of senses where we just have to work together. We've seen other boards struggle in this town. Um, in the one year and five months I've been here, we have not struggled in the slightest. And I thank, uh, Colleen, Katie, and, and our previous council that are still in the room, did an amazing job, uh, and again, have set the, the bar high. When times are good, uh, no one really cares, but when times are bad or challenging, that's when we'll be judged. And that's when we need the public to already have confidence here. That's not the time to start building confidence when times are bad. Follow me on social media or talk, hear me talk. I, you hear me building up the registrars, and I mentioned this as an example of I'm building them up and building up confidence in them. One, because they deserve it. Two, because the public needs to know. And three, there could be a crisis someday, and I want them already to have that confidence. I've been involved in communications for most of my life. I have two hobbies, uh, running, and I also, you know, do some, uh, national media as a homicide expert. In those communication realms, I've learned and made mistakes. Um, and hopefully all the mistakes are behind me and left in the city of Hartford or the state. Um, I've learned to really communicate more as opposed to less, uh, when appropriate and very carefully, and, uh, to really make the town feel, uh, like they have access to me, and I try to share, uh, as much as I can and as often as I can. Again, everything built towards public trust. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I can't wait. Um, it's going to be fantastic. I really take this to heart. You'll see that I'm trying to be fun and lighthearted. I'll make jokes, usually about myself. I talk about being educated in the town of Tallinn. Please don't let my intelligence be a good measure of the, uh, education system here in the town of Tallinn. But while I'm there, I can say I have a daughter in our school system. I have, I, it's no secret, I've said this a lot. I have many problems with the education system in these United States. Not one of those issues that I have, have I seen reflected in my own daughter, and I'm so happy with the education that she's receiving. Um, what does that tell me? I can't believe everything that I see in here on TV and in social media. And again, we try to stay above that here, uh, and we're, uh, hard to stay on the same page. We are going to have disagreements. You will disagree with me. I will disagree with you. I will be respectful, uh, and I ask the same of you. Um, if I don't have an answer for you, don't be afraid to ask questions. If I don't have an answer, I'll certainly try to do the best that I can to get that, uh, for you. Um, I use the, I lean heavily on my staff, some more than others, uh, with certain things. Um, and sometimes I need to get their, their, uh, contact them and I'll have it for you the next day. I'm sure, uh, Katie and Colleen will, uh, attest to the fact that we provide information, uh, as fast as we can, and we try to get it to all of you. There's no Secret Santas, there's no swirly little games. Uh, everything's above board here again. Public trust, public confidence, and staying above everything. When I meet with you one-on-one, uh, I'm going to go through a laundry list of things, and I'll run through it, uh, quickly here. Public trust and public confidence. I'll go through it again. I'll talk about social media. We're going to talk about contaminated wells a little bit. Uh, today, we're going to go over it, but there's, there's been an issue with people's water levels or the salt, sodium and chloride levels in their wells, well, um, and there's a lot to it. So now is not the time to go over it. We're going to talk about sidewalks in the green, the firehouse project on Gearing Road, our water commission here. For those who don't know, we are in the public utility business here in the town of Tallinn, and I'd like to get out of it. Uh, we have a water system that we're looking to produce for sale sign. We have an open contract with our resident state troopers that I'm talking with. Uh, we'll go over that. We have a Reets Across America event, uh, coming up that I'm going to ask all of you, uh, to attend if you can. Um, we have some opioid settlement money. I'll talk about how we're going to spend that. Uh, we have a public safety consultant to come in and look at, um, the apparatus and our fire departments and our ambulances. We'll talk about art and the great things we're doing there. We'll talk about some of the economic development going on, the Santini homes to the Starbucks. Uh, at some point, we're going to get, uh, we have a bridge project going on on Route 74. It's going to impact the town. Uh, I'll talk about polarization here in town and how we can work together to, to really limit that polarization and bring everyone together. Uh, I don't know, uh, prior to myself getting here, I, I watched social media and saw the great divide. But once we all got together as a team, it really started to soothe over. I so look forward to working with you. I thank you for these few moments. Sometimes I can go on. I'll try not to. But I look forward to the next two years. I hope, uh, at the end of the next two years, uh, we can all go out and, and have a beer like we did, um, a couple weeks ago at the end of their last two years. Uh, first round's on Katie, so. Second, Andre. Thank you, Sammy, for pinning for our first round. All right, that's all I have, everybody. Uh, council chair, back to you.
Sure, does, uh, the town manager does have a, a full, an additional agenda item tonight, uh, to give his monthly report. Does anybody have any questions, um, knowing that we're going to hear from them again? Okay.
What grade is your daughter in, Brian?
She's a freshman out of her wonderful Tallinn High School and is on the cheerleading team. And she couldn't be more embarrassed if she found out what I just said.
Make sure that gets back. It's good, yeah. All right. Um, next on the agenda are proclamations, and we don't always have proclamations, but we do tonight. Um, this is, has this already been presented to?
Sure was.
Okay, great. So I'm just going to read it in for the record, which is, uh, Steve set very high standards with the last council about reading these very well. So I'm going to try. Uh, this is the proclamation honoring Kevin Eklund upon his retirement from the Connecticut State Police in the town of Tallinn, whereas Kevin Eklund is a member of the 107th Training Troop, having entered the Training Academy on October 9, 1998. And whereas Kevin began his career as a patrol officer at Troop K. And whereas upon transferring to Troop C, Kevin became a K-9 handler for four years, and then transferred to the K-9 unit where he spent the next eight years. And whereas after his eight years with the K-9 unit, he went back to Troop C Patrol. And whereas in July of 2016, Kevin became the administrative resident trooper in Tallinn, where he remained until his retirement, November 1st, 2023. And whereas these years of service have marked by exemplary dedication to the residents by extending a hand when needed, building community relations and trust, working with town staff to create a safe and secure town, and fostering relationships between residents and the state police. And whereas the town believes and finds that it is in the best interest of the town of Tallinn and its residents to recognize, honor, and thank Kevin Eklund for his service, now therefore be it resolved that the town, by the town of Tallinn, that we hereby recognize and thank Kevin Eklund for his professional and personal dedication to the town of Tallinn and its residents. This is dated at Tallinn, Connecticut, on the 26th day of October, 2023, signed by former chairperson Steve Jones. So please extend our gratitude to Super Eklund. Uh, he will be sorely missed here. So the next item on our agenda usually doesn't take quite this long to get to public petitions, communications, and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of town council. This item does have a two-minute limit. If there is anyone who would like to speak, I would ask you, if you're here in person, to come to the table, state your name and address. If you are on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand, and you could press star nine, I believe, if you can't manage to raise your Zoom hand. Um, we'll start in person and then we'll just alternate, so. Go ahead, Sammy.
And, uh, sixty-one, five, two, Tallinn, Connecticut. Just one, uh, issue. Will you come across Jacob, Joe, Alex, Jennifer? That's wishes. And Katie and Colleen. And the wood player, welcome. And the only thing I'd like to remind all of you that people supported you, uh, on town, talent. So instead of, uh, thinking about your own goals, think about them. Think about those people. That should be the priority, because those are the people who supported town talent for ages. And I think it's their turn that if we can give something back to them, and that would be helpful for them. Because time is tough. And if you can do something about it, please do. And that's wishes and good luck. The only thing I'm going to miss. Mr. Foley, uh, town manager's post, where everything is. Great.
I'll stop in to tell you that, Sammy. Thank you, Sammy. Uh, we are going to alternate between, uh, in person and online, so I will call on Sean Lappin. And we asked Sean to unmute. There we go.
That's fine.
Hello, new, new town council, as well as returning members. A special congratulations to Katie on her, on myself, on her appointment as. A special congratulations to Katie on her, on myself, on her appointment as chairperson. Oh, sorry, I forgot about this. Sean Lappin, 168 Mountain Spring Road, Tallinn. Uh, I wanted to introduce myself in person, but unfortunately this week I'm away at a conference out of state. But I am confident there will be an opportunity to meet in person at the next towns council meeting. You will come to find me as a regular attendee at, at these meetings because I'm dealing with a very serious issue at my property that Mr. Foley already alluded to during his introduction. Contaminated well water. Yes, this basic life necessity that nearly everyone takes for granted is not available to me from the tap due to severely increased levels of both sodium and chlorides. This not only makes my water not potable, which is drinkable, but it also actively destroys my internal plumbing in my house. Chlorides are known to be caustic to copper piping. Based on multiple studies on my property and data analysis, the best conclusion is that my well's contamination is directly related to road salting predators from town operations and potentially a nearby quarry. For those that do not know immediately where my property is located, I'm on the corner of Mountain Spring Road and Old Post Road where the flashing stop sign is located. This intersection is already of concern due to the one-way stop and the hill that goes along the side of my property. So it is a major area of concern when it comes to water operations and keeping roads accessible. In addition to the fact that when the salt laden snow was plowed, it is pushed onto my property as I border the street. My well has suffered from salt infiltration for seven plus years at this point in time. My hope is that the vast amount of data and subsequent conclusions that have been made both by the state DEP office and an independent engineering consultant that was paid for by the town, the Langen Engineering Report. There is little doubt about the source of contamination. My hope is that in the words of town manager Foley at a recent previous town council meeting, we are looking for strategies to move forward, quote unquote, specifically solution-based ones. My hope is that this town council will put an end to the ordeal once and for all and give me back the full use of my property. Thank you.
Thank you. There's someone.
Hi, my name's Lisa Burns, 214 Slater Road. Um, on behalf of the town Republicans, I want to welcome you all and congratulate you for sitting here up on the, uh, town council. Um, just, uh, hope for a prosperous two years. And I feel that this group is really already meshing and working together. Um, I want to thank the town, um, Brian and Sarah Baff and all the town members who have put everything together and gotten through this election. Um, and, and I really appreciate the communications, um, as well as, um, you know, just the collaboration here. Um, and I wish, again, I just wish you all well. You all are so well deserving. Um, on a personal level, um, talking about the water contamination, I'm going to also mention the crumbling foundation issues that are still happening. While that's really being helpful in working with the state, I still think that we should really, um, as a town, be aware of these things. Um, I personally had a crumbling foundation. Thank God, I'm over it. Um, but there's a lot of people who are still working and, uh, through all of that. And I can't tell you how much of an emotional, physical drain that is on, on folks. You know, there's, uh, whether you're going to walk away from your house because you just can't afford getting it fixed or whether just getting those abatements and things from the, the town, um, with the tax reductions. These are all super helpful in making sure that the rest of the town citizens, um, can take advantage of those. So I really would, um, request that you keep up with that, um, as well. So anyway, I just want to thank you all. Um, I'm looking forward to the next two years. Congratulations, Katie. Congratulations, uh, Jacob. Um, and, uh, if I can be of any service to you, um, I'm happy to, to be. So, and I also want to publicly thank, uh, Ryan because we've been meeting together and, um, along with Brian and it's been extremely helpful. So tall and together, uh, community first, right?
Take care. So we'll go, uh, back to. Zoom, uh, Kenny Trice. We have some time.
Yeah, gas and gas new. Thank you, uh, Kenny Trice, 53 Doe Run. Very simply, congratulations to the town council. Congratulations, Katie. Congratulations, Jacob. Uh, you folks, uh, uh, did a lot to get here. What I will tell you is to remember this. You are on stage. What you say, how you conduct yourself is important. Remember that you're on stage. You are our elected officials and I know you will do well. Keep that in the back of your mind every time you step out here on this stage. Best of luck to you.
Thank you, Kenny. We'll go back to the room then. Is there anyone else in the room who wants to talk?
Steve Jones, 504 Old Stafford Road, just wanted to come and congratulations to both sides of the aisle and being elected and starting your terms. I hope yours is half as eventful, but twice as productive as our last two years. Another piece of advice, be clearly and concisely. Lisa will greatly appreciate it in all her minutes and recordings. Uh, and also just want to express my support for Rick Conti being continued as our town attorney. He's steadfast and has our history. And I also support the use of the ARPA fund as laid out in this 8.3 year, whatever agenda items. You guys are, you know, a much busier agenda than I think normal, so. And also, uh, support all of your appointments and hope you guys continue the very dedicated position and role of getting new residents in. A lot of you served on boards and commissions to start out that were appointed and then make your way up to the elected roles. And I think it's a good stepping stone process for people to know the town, learn the town and get involved. So thank you all and best of luck. Best luck to Brian too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Steve. Please come, keep coming back, you know. We'll miss. So we'll go back to Zoom. MG.
Please send to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, I am Melanie Gooden. I'm from 406 Buff Cap Road. Um, I want to, uh, mirror what Sean Lappin had said earlier regarding the contaminated well situation. I want to appreciate, I appreciate his efforts, um, attending these town council meetings to keep the issue at hand and on the top of everyone's or in part of everyone's agenda. Um, I too am a house that's affected by the, um, salt brine that's coming from the snow, snow trucks. And, um, I've been identified from the Langen report as one of those houses that's most likely due to the, um, it is most likely due to the road brine. So I just want to reiterate what Sean said. Hopefully, uh, sorry, my dogs. Um, hopefully we can keep, uh, this subject up on top of the agenda. I don't have use, my, my, um, pipes are corroding constantly. We have to, um, look for other sources of water. It's just a non, it's a, an ongoing issue and one that lowers the value of my home, unfortunately. So I hope, uh, this new town council, congratulations to you all. And I hope that you can continue to, uh, support our efforts for, um, the, I, the residents that do not have potable drinking water and haven't had it for years. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the room who would like to come up and speak?
Hey, I'm Jen Galichant, 150 Timber Trail. I'm also a Tallinn Board of Education member, so I just wanted to congratulate all of you. Uh, congratulations, Katie and Jacob. We will be an excellent leadership team. We'll miss you, Jacob, on the board. Um, so thank you for being here. Thank you for serving and I am looking forward to working with all of you.
Is there anyone else from Zoom who would like to speak? Anyone else from the room? Okay. Without any other people stepping forward, we will move on to our next item, which is a public hearing. This is a continuation, um, of a public hearing that started on October 10th and then the 24th. Brian, you want to get us up to speed here?
Thanks you for waking me up. Yes, so, um, well, this all stems from, um, the execution of a search and seizure warrant, um, definitely, uh, an adult oriented establishment here in town, uh, last year, uh, early this year. Uh, when that occurred, uh, we realized that it was probably a time to reexamine chapter 51 of our town code. In the examine, through that incident and in, in the examination of the code, we realized that there was some, um, areas for improvement. This was championed by councilperson, uh, Lubah at that time with the assistance of our town attorney. Original language was submitted, a public hearing was opened and that's what's on our agenda today. Uh, in consultation with our town attorney, we realized, um, or he suggested or advised that we should tinker with said language. In that tinkering, he had a great amount of research to do and he is currently steeped in said research. When he provides us with that, so what I suggest is that we close the public hearing on this. And, um, when the new language comes in, we will open a new public hearing on that language, which is anticipated to be a softer version than what was originally submitted. Uh, that's all I have, councilperson.
Thank you. Do we need to open the public hearing? And then it will allow anyone who might want to participate in the public hearing?
Sure.
Okay. So, um, first of all, before we go to the public hearing, are there any members of council who have questions, comments?
Is there kind of a, a summary of what's proposed, any change and impact it has on not only this one business, but every business that's in this town? Uh, with respect to the authority that this creates the town?
That was, that was a, a heavier question. Um, there is a, there is a, there is a summary within your town manager packet, I believe, Sarah, isn't it? Lou, Lou, Lou was emailed to the reporter in there.
I have it. It's not in their packet.
So when you come, when you come to sit with me, I'll give you a, a pretty good rundown of exactly what it is.
Lou did a really good job of kind of outlining what you're asking.
Okay.
Provide that to you.
A reporter asked him a question and he basically went through the whole thing and that wrote it out for her. And when I read it, I'm like, that's perfect for, um, you. So I'll, I will get that to, to you guys, uh, when you, when you sit down with me. But, um, as it affects the other businesses, the, 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 the most impact it has on other businesses is the owner, uh, owns both those buildings. And for ease of thought, a tease and subway. And, uh, so that, that's the immediate effect on other businesses as far as long-term philosophical. That's not written out of Mr. Lou's.
Okay. Um, does it, does it talk about whether you're trying to go back and sort of research?
You'll see a red line, uh, when he, when he offers it up here, a, a red line version of what was proposed and what he had, uh, changed it to, which will imply where they, he needed to do.
That's what I expected.
That's what, that's a loose bracket. There's a red.
Uh, Mr. Boyd, but this only impacts adult oriented businesses. Is that, uh, tech, like the actual local language, right? It's directed to adult oriented businesses, is that true?
Accurate, and there is only one in town.
So procedurally, um, just to summarize what you said, we are going to open the public hearing to allow for any, because we have an advertised public hearing for tonight. We'll open the public hearing to allow anyone who wishes to participate in the public hearing item to speak tonight on the proposed changes to chapter 51, which are in our packet. And these are the same changes, Brian, that we've had in the past three public hearings, right? There's been no change to this language.
To that language. When there is, we will open a new public.
Okay. Um, and I believe that due to a question that was asked the first night of our public hearing, the, uh, our legal counsel has gone back to reconsider potential changes. And at this point, we're being advised to close this public hearing, uh, after, of course, anyone has an opportunity to speak. Um, and then, as you said, not take any action on the current changes in front of ours. And we would take, we would wait to hear from our attorney for future, um, recommendations for changes.
That is accurate. Your counselor has suggested exactly that, um, and my advice is to, um, against advice.
Okay. So does anybody have any questions about that? All right. So is there a motion then to open the public hearing regarding the proposed changes to chapter 51?
There you are. I move to open the public hearing to view suggested changes to chapter 51.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
We, we do need to do a roll call vote, um, so I'll start with you, Colleen.
I.
Thank you, Chris.
Hi.
Jen.
Hi.
Alex.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Jacob.
Hi.
I'm also advised that is unanimous to open the public hearing. So we are now, we now have an open public hearing. And if anyone wishes to participate in this public hearing by speaking to the council about the proposed changes on chapter 51, now is your opportunity to come up to the table, give us your name and address or to raise your hand on Zoom, star nine will also, uh, allow your hand to be raised on Zoom. Yes, we're having a few technical issues, so we only have the screen behind us, which is okay. Is there anyone from the public here who would like to participate in the public hearing? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing no one wishing to participate in a public hearing, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Lou by Jen, is there a second?
A second motion.
Jacob second the motion. Is there any discussion about closing the public hearing? No, so we're going to do a roll call vote. Colleen.
I.
Chris.
Hi.
Jen.
Hi.
Alex, Joe.
Hi.
I, I am also nice. Yeah, our public hearing is now closed. Um, is there any further discussion about taking no action on our agenda items for the changes to chapter 51? Knowing that we will get, uh, future red line recommendations from our lawyer. Um, Brian, those will just procedurally, uh, those will come to us from our lawyer. And then as a council, we will discuss them. And if we decide to move forward, we would have a new public hearing, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. So.
You'll get those in advance of a, hopefully well in advance of our next, or whatever the council needed prior to that. So you'll have time to.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and I would also recommend, and I, um, I hope I'm not overextending, but, um, former council member Lou or Huba has, uh, taken as, as, uh, town manager fully said, a very active role in this. And I would, uh, recommend that if anybody has any questions to reach out directly to Lou, uh, because he has done an awful lot of research on this as well. You want to?
That's a good question. So do you think we might get this by the next council meeting or no? You don't know?
I thought we'd have it for this council meeting. Okay, it's taken a little while. It's kind of a deep dive. There's.
Okay.
A lot of layers.
Okay. Just curious. Has it given enough you on the timing? No.
Katie.
I. Yeah, I think we'll, I think we'll get it maybe even tomorrow.
Yep.
Um, so it's coming. Um, I hope that we can, um, we can, we'd have plenty of time to review. Okay. Okay. So then with no objection, we will move on to item 12A on our agenda. Um, which is boards and commissions responsible to council. Uh, Brian, do you want to talk about this? I, I can talk about it whenever you'd like.
Sure, well, um, typically, um, this is the, the point of, and if you look in your procedures, there's actually a little section carved out on this, uh, where committees could report to town council. Um, and there's various committees and you'll, you'll be asked to, um, somewhat keep an eye on, uh, Shepherd, some of these committees. They would give a report or representative would give a report, um, if there was anything pertinent that we needed to, um, bring up here.
So there are, what I was, uh, categorizing as five subcommittees that are responsible to town council. Um, members of these subcommittees are voting members. Um, so the chair and vice chair will either serve on the ARPA and Firehouse subcommittees or appoint a designee. Um, so there are two voting members on the, uh, ARPA and Firehouse subcommittees. The Roads Health Task Force needs two members, um, as does the boards and commissions vetting committee. Um, and that those, the boards and commissions vetting reviews all applications from residents who might want to serve on a board and commission. Um, the one thing that I would ask you to consider is if you want to be part of vetting residents to participate on boards and commissions, that you keep in mind that we need to be very responsive on this board, uh, because we don't want to let residents kind of not hear back from us in a timely manner. We always want to encourage people to participate. So if you're going to be part. So if you're gonna be part of that group of two people, just please be prepared to be very responsive to that. And then the fifth is the Burj Grob Building Committee. The Burj Grob Building Committee hasn't met in two years. We are simply waiting for the audit to be completed before we dissolve that committee. And hopefully, they're going through the audit process right now, so hopefully that can solve any time. So their councilperson, you to check, has been serving on ARPA as the chair. Colleen, is there anything you want to update us on, or do you want to wait until the agenda item for ARPA?
I thank you, Katie, first of all, for giving a good overview of all those subcommittees that respond to the council. We can definitely just wait till the further on the agenda to keep the meeting moving along.
Okay. And I have been serving on Roads Health Task Force. We are going to add to the agenda a consideration of a request from the Roads Health Task Force. I, the Roads Health Task Force has quite an undertaking, and I think we can talk about it a little bit more when we get to that agenda item that we'll have. So the next item on the agenda is town council liaisons, which are slightly different than people who serve on boards and commissions that are responsible to the council. I think Town Manager Foley kind of gave, gave us a quick overview of that too. Traditionally, the town council appoints liaisons to a number of boards and commissions. Liaison serves as a point of contact to ensure the lines of communication between town council and the board and commission both ways. Have open lines of communications. Keep everybody informed on what's going on for town business. Liaisons are not members of these boards. They cannot vote, and they can only participate in meetings if they're called upon by the chair of that particular board and commission. There are a lot of them. And recognizing that we are all volunteers, I am going to ask the town manager's office to send out an additional, it wasn't our welcome packet communications, but just to send out again a list of all the boards and commissions, including those that are responsible to council and the liaisons. I would ask you guys to each consider what your capacity is. Look at the schedules that are on that listing, and please let me know by November twenty-fourth what boards and commissions you might be interested in participating on. And in our next regular meeting, we'll make assignments for everybody to ensure, you know, pretty much an even load for everybody, you can handle it, on all the various boards and commissions.
We're not doing that this evening.
We're not going to do assignments to boards and commissions tonight. No.
Okay, ready for that then?
Yeah. It's, it, there are a lot of them, so I would ask that you take a look at that schedule as well.
Is that schedule indicate like how often we, how long the beach board generally?
Oh, the length of meetings, it's not on there because it's very, it's variable. Yeah, it is variable. I mean, it really depends on what business is in front of any particular board and commission, you know, I certainly. I did put some notes on what I'm hoping will go out to you on committees that maybe haven't met in the last two years because they only meet when there's business in front of them, for example. But, you know, there, there's information about when those meetings, you know, how, when those meetings are scheduled, whether it's the first Thursday of the month or something like that, what time, as well as whether they are hybrid meetings in person only or virtual only. So we all can have a pretty good idea of what we're signing on for. Right? And if you have questions about that communication as it goes around, Seravat is a great resource to ask questions of. Jacob and I, of course, are happy to answer any questions too.
And Katie, just to clarify, sorry, just to clarify, you appoint these, or are those going to be voted on? Like every, you know, usually those are.
These are appointed. Yeah.
Okay. Right, sure. Okay.
Yep. While we have you, Colleen, are there any updates for boards and commissions that you've been serving as liaison for that you'd like to give to us?
Sure. So I, I was at last night's meeting for Tolland Recreation Advisory Board. Quick update, they talked about opera money. We, Tammy Nuccio and I, especially Tammy, spearheaded a big thing for the town, helping split fifty percent, if something costs fifty percent, you'd pay fifty percent. It was a discount thing for a program and for town. And we spent, let's see, to date, Opera Money has provided approximately a hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars in relief for program registration, which is huge. It's been a great thing, and that's one of the things that's on the agenda for later on to approve more money for them. Then we also, you just gave quick updates from over the summer, how there was a movie night, Celebrate Tolland that happened. Halloween, it was just a lot of updates because we hadn't met in a while. But the biggest thing is continuing supporting the program and helping residents with that fifty percent discount, which is huge.
Thanks, Colleen.
Yep.
And I have been serving as liaison to the historic district commission. I'm going to attend their meeting tomorrow night. Just because they have a pretty big item on their agenda, and I'll bring back an update on that and we'll move forward.
I have an interest in that.
Okay. Yeah, you, anyone, anyone's always welcome to attend any of these meetings. They're, they're on the town website, they're noticed, all these meetings are noticed, so of course, anybody can attend any meeting you want to. And I, I encourage you, especially if you have an interest, you know, you might want to attend one if there's one between now and our next meeting, or take a look at some of the recordings from those meetings, just to get a sense of what it's like if you have a difference.
Are most of these community meetings recorded, or is it more just minutes?
I think the ones that are on Zoom are all recorded.
If they're on Zoom, they have to.
Yeah.
If they are in person, they're not required to be recorded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions about boards and commissions before we move on? Got a question?
Is the likelihood for a board commission to be created if there is a need for one?
Sure. If there is a need for a new board and commission, the town council would create one. So that would, that would be a matter that we would discuss to put together. And the same, I guess, for dissolving. All right. Now we are on to new business. And the first item on new business is the appointment of the town attorney for the, for her term of November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three through November. Yes, please.
Thank you. So town council, US town council have representation of an attorney. And it's your prerogative to select said attorney. For the past thirty or more years, Rick Conti has been that attorney with one break back in the nineties, I believe. His institutional knowledge has been incredibly valuable to this town. And he is a trusted, trusted confidant of myself in the previous council. As former council chair Jones mentioned, please consider reappointing Attorney Conti. He's been in several towns in other matters. He is looking to start scaling back and eventually retire. So in doing so, he very responsibly, if it's something that he, it's, if it's something that is getting bigger than he can handle, he recommends an attorney. And he does so being financially prudent. In other words, someone who's close to or better than his own rate. And his rate is decent. So I, I, I ask that you reappoint Attorney Rick Conti as the representative on town.
Thank you. Do you guys have questions about that? Yeah, go ahead.
Just a quick question. So I'm, but how do we, how do we check his rates? When you mentioned he has reasonable rates? How we, how we know that he's got a good market rate compared to whether town paying and type of services provided?
One, sometimes he refers this to other attorneys when there's a conflict, and we find out very quickly that his rates are. He's the best rate I've seen of any attorney we've hired. And do we do any sort of comparatively so to other towns or anything?
No, I mean, in the past, we have.
Yeah.
In the past, we've got various. Confirmation things like that. And yes, I can agree that a lot of, and Michael probably pop into, that a lot of his rate, his rate is much lower than a lot of competition out there. But Mike, if you want to add in.
Yeah, Mike Wilkinson, Director of Administration of Services. Yeah, Brian, another town actually recently did a review and asked a bunch of towns in our area. And I provided our information and Rick's was one of the lowest on, on the list for town attorneys. Just so you know, so that that was done recently.
And that comes with the backing of a firm. And the thirty-plus years, you know, he mentioned, we were talking about getting into a private attorney matter. He mentioned a case that was relevant and actually litigating it back in the eighties when it first came up and. Good to have that institutional knowledge.
Yeah, for sure. I'm just curious.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion then to approve the?
I'll make the motion, Katie.
Thank you, Colleen. Is there a second?
Second.
And Chris? All right. Any further discussion before we vote? Yeah, okay. We will do a roll call vote then. Colleen?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Alex? Joe?
David?
Hi.
I am also an eye, so that is unanimous. Thank you. Item thirteen point two is a consideration of resolution for ARPA Subcommittee funding use recommendations for six hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred dollars. Very specific number, Brian.
Yes, very specific financial director here to help us with this should we need it, and also the director of our ARPA committee. So for the councilpersons who don't know, we had the American Rescue Plan Acts. We got a lot of, a lot of funding from the federal government. As I've seen in other municipalities, without naming names, sometimes funds are divvied out as a result of votes. In an effort to thwart that here in the town of Tolland, a diverse committee was put together in an effort to make sure that the funds are carefully thought out before being given out to whatever, wherever we decide to send them. In that committee, we've given out, and it's on our website, a list, and maybe I'll have it before we come in, of all the stuff that we've been asked for and all the stuff that we have put out. And as you heard, councilperson you to check talk about a little while ago, it's, it's been well received. One of the best, and we'll get into it in a little while, is our Recreation Director Bruce Watt will tell us about. You know, after, after ARPA, everyone disappeared from programs, from public. And the intent of ARPA in its most organic sense was to get people back into society, and that involves. Part of that effort was making our recreation programs more affordable. And we reduced them down to fifty percent. And it was incredibly successful in that his program was packed this summer. Crandall was packed this summer. It was such, it was such a great turnout and really rejuvenated our recreation program. We tried to communicate and do a lot of social media with it as well, but I thank Bruce and his staff for doing that. But I obviously, what you see before you on the background sheet are the three things that we are recommending, one of those being for the recreation programs. Well, I'll start with those before we move on to the next. Bruce, do you want to talk about that program anymore?
I can just add a couple of few things. This money has been so great for the town of Tolland and for the residents. You know, we're a very active community. So to allow an affordable program for everybody, just get out there for physical activity for physical health, mental health, it has been just a blessing to get that kind of funding for our program. So I really hope we can get more to keep this going forward and thank you.
So I have a question. Just what is, what would you say the, the objective of the American Rescue Plan is? In, what is, what does it say things can achieve? Like in its clearest view?
I have to research that, but my personal, to get you the exact what Uncle Sam says it should be. And in my opinion, one of the things was to get people back and involved. And that's what this person, this portion of it is, is to do that, and also fiscal recovery for towns, municipalities as well.
Okay. And that money's being allocated out to these different parts of town?
I can provide you the list and show you everything.
Yeah, just because I'm, that's something that I don't have a.
The list is.
It's not packed already. No, we got, that's at least the ones we're recording, so. Already.
The background is in there, and Brian alluded to a spreadsheet that certainly Lisa's office can, you know, provide an updated spreadsheet of all the projects that have come before, those that have been voted on, those that have passed, what the balance, you know, the running balance, that sort of thing.
It's a pretty impressive list. On the subcommittee is chaired by councilperson you to check. Our former councilperson Tammy Nuccio also was state rep, our financial director, and myself, and it's a well-rounded distribution through so many programs and so many different parts of town.
You will also see on the webpage, the town webpage, under boards and commissions, there's the ARPA Subcommittee, and we have a wealth of information there about ARPA, about what we've committed so far. What is on the list to be considered for the future, things like that. So you'll see a lot of information there as well.
So the information regarding this delving, delving into how the money's allocated in some of the different areas of town, does it go into refinement of any of these areas or updating any of these areas, or that's not really how the money?
What do you mean refinement?
Like for, like Crandall's, for example, like some of the, some of the buildings, we pay benches.
So how it works is, there's a couple of ways, like, like somebody could submit a request to ARPA. And you're sending an email to town, we would like you to consider ARPA funding for new dugouts for the Little League and softball and baseball. This came, this happened. It goes to ARPA and rather than going to our capital where we would have to pay for it through essentially our tax base.
Okay.
It goes to, it doesn't go in our capital budget, and we sniff it off with ARPA and have it paid for in that manner.
That's good.
Also, there are times where our financial director looks at debt, future debt for the town in the future, and tries to best decide what capital items are out there. What things are sitting on that capital list, and we're going to look at two of them tonight.
Okay.
Is that dump truck in that grade, or we're sitting out in our capital plan either this year, or I don't know how many years out they were off the top of my head. Where we would have had to pay for them through tax.
Through regular taxes. Okay.
She weighs, and we'll get into the budget thing. The capital money, she tries to balance out the debt, so there's not any radical changes, and then it's steady, and there's fiscal philosophy behind that. She more eloquently explained than certainly I could. And so that's basically where the requests come from, either out of our capital project or requests coming in for other, other matters. But again, that list is fantastic, and we're, we're actually, I know the committee's very proud of where those dollars have been staying.
So you'd say that list creates like a precedence for what need, for needs?
Well, the, the list, well, there's two lists, a list of what we spend it on and a list of the requests that are out there. So look at both, and, and, because you'll have say in, in where that goes. The ARPA committee decides what we're going to recommend to you to spend it. That is just our recommendation. These are unanimous, but at the same time, you, you and the council have the right to say we disagree with the committee and and not, not send the money. But usually, almost completely, except for one or two, not so fun ones, it's, it's been very smooth.
Yeah. Sorry if I keep drilling down. Those are, those are kind of the questions ahead on that, because that was.
No need to apologize. I love this stuff.
Okay. So about the first item here, I think it's great that the rep department is seeing increased usage. I think by kind of the rates, but I guess my question is, you know, in a little bit, this money will go away. Has there been any talks about what to do after that funding is no longer available to help with the, the program rates?
Our hopes that it reinvigorates the rec program, gets people out, and, and, you know, there. Um, and, and, you know, they're well aware that these, this is just a temporary, uh, one or, it was one year now, it's a two-year thing, but certainly that this ends uh December thirty first, two thousand and twenty-four, we have to have all the ARPA money. So it'll end then, but yes, I mean, Lisa, do you have anything to add to that or Bruce?
No, uh, regarding the recreation program.
Regarding it coming to it, that recreation, which he spoke, um, it's gonna come to an end and next summer parents are gonna have to spend.
And the whole goal was to regenerate the programs and participate, participation in the programs, getting the public out there because, you know, with COVID, everybody was just wanting to stay home and stay away and, and programs were suffering as well as the operation. Because a lot of the, the staff in that department are paid by program revenues rather than general fund dollars. So this was initiative to try to get people to get into it and hopefully they'll, they will continue after the discounts are gone. He's putting out a lot of great programs and it's really, and not only to help them participate, but also to help the citizens of the town who were recuperating from the whole COVID pandemic and the impact on their incomes and, and livelihood, it, it gave them the ability to be able to participate in things where they couldn't in, in in the recuperation period. Again, we have to have everything committed by December of twenty-four. And at that point, if we have not committed every dollar of those funds, we have to turn it back to the federal governance. We're well on our way.
Okay, I saw as my dialogue monopolizing on the second part was with that extra eight hundred thousand, like our committee have a decent idea of what's gonna happen.
Or is it, we have a robust list.
Okay, alright.
And we have plenty of options and a lot of things to consider in where we're gonna go with it. And um, again, a lot of it plays into debt. As you look tonight, the dump truck and the grader, we're gonna be put up to debt. Basically put on the old credit card. Yeah, yeah, that's the way to put it in layman's terms. Uh, this way here, uh, we can pay for it one-time shot and we'll own it and that's the end of it. Uh, but there's a, a future list. Again, there's a lot of consultation with everybody involved. Um, and I think Jake, I've seen other towns that I've been to spend money, just throw them at boats. I can tell you that's, it's not the case here.
I definitely agree. Anything you can do to pay for things in cash, so it's capital, it's a good idea, so.
There's a financial director to my side over here on Green.
Yeah. That's all.
Hi, Chris.
Uh, so with respect to the Recreation Department, I think it's fantastic that we're offering the fifty percent discount. I'm just curious, and I'm sure various programs differ, but like, for example, like the summer program for kids at Crandall, how much does that cost?
He has, we have all that data. Go ahead, Bruce.
Um, this past summer, um, I believe it was uh two hundred and fifty dollars per week if you were normally to, to go for a camp and ask from uh an eight-to-four program, um, so financial-wise, that's probably one of the things down still for daycare that you're, you're in the time for the services that they're also getting, so um, can for, even send their child for a hundred and fifty dollars.
Ellie, do you want to understand anything?
Oh yeah, I think Brian covered it really well. Alex has a lot of great questions and um um, there is an awesome, there's awesome information. Under the Town Council, ARPA link, there's all kinds of that information I think Alex is looking for. Um, I think Brian, you said you can get it to him or I could shoot you the um direct link if that's helpful to Alex. Um, yeah, we definitely, if you wanted to talk about how we worked as a Subcommittee, it was great. Everything was vetted. It could take months on one topic, um, but we took everything very seriously and ultimately it comes down to the council just to decide on what we vetted. It will be approved. Um, on these three particular items, um I, I would see no reason to say no. Um, two of them is capital um items and that's removing debt and saving taxpayers' money. And the other one is helping the community um thrive and help, you know, their pocketbooks as well. Um, and as far as I believe there's eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars left, um I just want to say we could have spent that, right, Brian and Lisa, at the last meeting, but we decided that would, would not be the right thing to do because with the new council coming on, it's now the new council's responsibility to do what they think is best left with the fund and left and not just to spend it. So it worked well, it was honest and I hope um that continues moving forward. Um, so I think that's all I have, Katie.
I just wanted to piggyback on, on, for instance, uh, uh, question regards to the um we were one of the families who used the program over the summer. Um, my two oldest, instead of staying around the house, were able to go to camp um at a discount in the Town of Tallinn, um, which was greatly appreciated by my family considering my husband and I both work full-time. Um, so I gave them something fun to do. Um, and, and for us, it, it didn't break the bank, so um I fully support you know, being able to, that offer those discounts again.
How, how long, um, what, what's the timeframe for this discount continuation?
Bruce? Uh, it would bring the funding through December which some of the refrigeration, obviously we take very frequently five or two. Um, so it kind of lead into January and February, you know what I mean, but collections will tend to be finished by Christmas.
Great, thank you.
Any questions on the, the dump, the dump truck and the grader? Um, let me just kind of fill you in. Um, those that are new, uh, when I got here to count to the, to the, as the town manager, I'm I had the benefit of looking out my window and seeing a lot of trucks and fire trucks drive by my house and wonder, do we really need all of these? And how do we know if we need all of these? And um I dove into that uh a lot over the last year and a half. Our fire chief has done an amazing job and saved us one point five million dollars on the debt just recently. We'll hear more about that in the coming days. Um, in regards to instead of buying something new, we got something used and I thank him. Uh, it's been tough for the fire chief and the DPW uh director as I drill down, do we really need these, these, these uh apparatus? I have consultant reports, uh, one from the, for the public safety dating back to two thousand and ten. We are looking to renew that as we speak and we're in the process of vetting um a report on, on what apparatus town needs to be covered safely. Uh, the same, we just uh got one done economically with uh DPW on our uh apparatus. You know, they can't tell us we have, they can't tell us exactly what we need. Certainly they can tell us we have too much or too little. Um, and we were just about right and there's some good points we make and, and uh in that consultant report, I'm happy to avail that to you. Uh, in regards to uh, there's recommendations. And so each time, uh, we're gonna get, we like the large truck here. Uh, I would love to see, do we really need it? And what does it do? And what the consultant reports say? Uh, and so I'm, I'm gonna stay in concert uh with that. Again, uh, I'm a taxpayer in this town. My mom is a taxpayer in this town, so I'm very cognizant of being fiscally responsible. Uh, this uh dump truck is one of the very big ones that you see during the snowstorms. Uh, so it is also a plow as well as a uh dump truck that can be used uh for everyday projects. And the used road, uh, used road grader, right now, we we hire a contractor to do it. Uh, without getting into the, the exact numbers of it all, I believe we pay about thirty thousand a year for the contractor and that includes the product that we have to have. What a road, what a, and the way it works now is basically we buy product, we put it down and it's uh, it's for our unimproved roads, our dirt roads. Uh, the, the product goes down and we have to spread it out and eventually it washes off. The grader recovers it, so we don't have to buy the material anymore. Fixes the road, uh, and you know, levels it off and makes it drivable. But we can do it whenever we want. And this summer was a disaster uh in regards to rain. That has no effect on this grader. We had planned to buy it long before that, but it just, this summer exasperated uh the need for it, so um that's where we are with those two things. If I can answer, our, our DPW director had a medical thing, um, can't be here, but I can try to answer any questions and of course, uh, Lisa, Lisa's here to assist with math.
Essentially, the grader will pay for itself for years and change.
Yes, and we own it.
Uh, whether Who's doing the maintenance of that machine?
We would do that, I believe. Yeah, we have our own, we have, we have our own, we have two mechanic divisions, ones for the machines that parks and wreck and then one in our new facility and hopefully we'll take a tour of that uh when, when, when we schedule, we're gonna, we're gonna schedule that for all of us to go around and look at our facilities here.
Something I really might have a question on that is hiring somebody to do the work seems, you know, sort of in three, what'd you say it was, thirty-five for the year?
That costs, that's material as well.
Yeah, material as well. Um, I just would have wondered how much it would cost to, to keep that machine working. Be my own question.
To use grader.
Sounds good.
It is used. Yep, it kind of, you know, but it, looking at it, um, obviously a new grader would be substantially more. Uh, but those, those types of, those types of considerations, maintenance, parts, uh, all of that is carefully weighed by our DPW director as to how we're gonna move forward, but those guys are pretty good with the wrench. So, it's a good question. We don't have one identified. There are several in that price range that are out there. We can't move until we have the money committed. The, the deeper of them won't even talk to us until we have money to commit.
Alright, I'm sure you have your, this probably, you're aware by a ten-year-old grader that, you know, parts aren't made for it anymore and, you know, seeking out vendors that can custom make parts and it costs a lot more than
I agree with that.
You know, this, it, it, five years, it's gonna cost us more to keep this and then back up the same road, no pun intended, uh, to get another grader. So, um, I'm sure they've looked at, my, my other question is, do we have, um, do we have the resource to drive this thing and, and, and take care of these roads?
Yes.
And then what's, do we have a breakout of this thirty thousand dollars a year cost between materials and that the vendor's using?
I wanna say it was twenty-eight, off the top of my head, it was exactly thirty, twenty-eight thousand a year.
Materials plus their time.
Yes.
Used truck.
Yeah.
Any idea how much the materials cost?
I don't have the breakdown in front of me now.
It's kind of important, cause if it's, sure, it's twenty thousand materials, it's eight thousand, you guys truck, that this isn't a good deal.
This recovers materials.
Uh, why couldn't we hire a vendor to recover the materials?
We could hire a vendor and recover, but it's, it gets, that's also an added expense, so, so instead of this will recover the materials, resurface it and regrade the road and it's, it's a regrader. Right now, we just have to keep dumping on it and it keeps washing off. This is a, this, this machine, it has, I don't know if you've seen it, it's got the big side things that actually goes and scoops it up and, and puts it back on there.
Yeah, they're popular. Yeah, I'd just be curious to know how much the materials were costing us, because if we went to the bay, of the vendor that has this type of equipment already, you know, what, what would be the cost for that in terms of materials plus the equipment?
Colleen, we, we, we went through this in the, on the ARPA part of it, I just don't have those. Colleen, do you have those numbers in front of you from the ARPA?
I, I do not, Brian, have those numbers in front of us. Um I mean, I definitely, I don't have the numbers in front of us, but I definitely know that there was a big advantage of doing it this way, that was more cost efficient. Um you know, I, I understand what Joe's questions are especially, um, but yeah, I don't know.
I agree, yes. I had asked the brand new town. First night without getting more knowledge about what's going on.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Go ahead, Jen.
Brian, so you, you were mentioning that there's one, one piece of, one motivation to getting the grader was time. Um, can you get a little bit more insight? You said we can just do this whenever we want to. Is there an issue what with hiring someone else to do it? We're getting them out here fast enough to do what we need to do?
Yes, and I believe uh there's only certain, we, we only do a certain amount of times a year. Um fiscally, we can only, we don't, we can only use it, I believe it was three times a year. Uh, this, where, this way here, when there's, you know, a storm, we can get it out there and use it.
So it's kind of an, uh, on demand whenever we needed to use it, which is if we hire somebody we can't just get them out here.
One of the things you see on social media is, you know, this dirt road is a disaster. Where's the town? What are they doing? So, help to assuage that to some degree.
Thank you.
I, I have a question with respect to the dump truck. Is this gonna be replacing like an old truck that we have or is this an addition?
If we're bringing a new one on, we had best get an old one on.
Okay, so we sell the old one?
Yes, if it's a old, yes, typically depending on the type of vehicle, we always try to sell, it's the same with fire trucks. If you're looking, you know anyone that's looking for a ladder truck, uh, we have, we have, as soon as we speak. Um, but uh, yes, we're, we try to, to sell it and there's a process involved with that in the town and, you know, of professionalization of that practice as well.
Okay, thanks.
Um, this is the council's where my time will be expiring soon, unfortunately.
Um, Brian, is there urgency or just a decision on our road?
Not that I can think of. Lisa? Being involved with that, right?
Part of the capital plan.
Yeah. It was just the normal function, you know, unanimous on the commission. And I apologize to Director Lep and had a
Then, not to, you know, to dissuade away from allocating that money to that, but I talking about a program that benefits the entire town like Crandall's, then talking about something that is the, you know, for the use of a few roofs in town. And do you know how many roads it's, it's really using for?
Eight miles of unimproved roads, but really it's gonna benefit the entire tax base.
Sure.
When they have to go up to debt.
Sure.
Which understood, understood.
Um, and this road, we had a road grader on our five-year capital plan prior to this year, right? This was something that previous councils had approved on a five-year capital plan, so this was something we were going to purchase.
Right, it was included in our debt management plan, which the opportunity here is to be able to use a one-time revenue for a one-time expense. Um, so it's not something recurring and it'll also reduce how much we have to issue debt for and pay interest on top of that over twenty years or whatever the case may be. Um, so the, these two items were in for this year coming up. I pulled them out of that plan with the intention that ARPA is hopefully going to cover it. Um, if that's not the case, we, we're, we're in the final stages of putting that capital plan together. So I can't really change it again at this late stage. It'll probably have to be something added as we go through the budget process if it does not make it through the ARPA funding source. Um, which we can do or not do, whichever the council's pleasure is.
I had, I just have one more question. Um, I know that we have a very wonderful, reliable DPW staff. I also know if we ask a lot of them, um, and we haven't been able to add a a staff member, even though they've requested it, I think the past two budget cycles. Do we have staff time to run this grader?
According to Director Lep, absolutely.
Thank you. No questions again?
No, just a comment. I was just gonna say, you know, if there isn't a sharp deadline in a couple of weeks, I, I would be in favor of maybe just tabling this and having a discussion maybe at the next meeting. Just, um, you know, it sounds like you do have answers to those questions, but it would just be good, it'd be good to hear them out and, yeah.
I agree. I, I wouldn't, I would like to uh consider taking the grader out of this with, um, because we have some questions on council, I wanna make sure everyone's comfortable with what we're voting on. Would would everyone, would the council feel comfortable moving forward on the recreation funding? Is there?
Absolutely.
What about the dump truck? Would you want to move forward on the dump truck or you wanna wait on that?
I have a couple more questions.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, what I would ask then, um, before we, before we ta, uh, look at the motion then is for uh, questions on these items. questions on these items to be emailed to the town manager. Per rules and procedures, you will be copying Jacob and I on those questions, of course. Um, and if, the sooner you can email them to the town manager, the better, because then maybe we can get the answers incorporated into the packet in our next, for our next meeting. I also know that Tom Manager Foley is setting up one-on-ones with everyone so that you can talk to him in more depth at that point. Uh, so again, in the interest of making sure everyone's comfortable with, uh, what we're going to vote on tonight. Um, I would like to, uh, see a motion to approve agenda item twelve point two as outlined in our, um, packet. But only for item number one on that list. Thirteen point two, thank you very much, I'm sorry. So, so moved by, uh, Chris, seconded by Alex, okay, so.
And then, um, just to add, so my, my time's expired. Does anyone have anything specific for me before I go? Brian?
No, sorry. Okay, good luck, thank you.
Thank you, yes, that three-year-old.
Do you wanna vote really quick on this item before? Okay, so Alex, if you ask, Colleen?
I, yes, I.
Okay, thank you. Jen, hi. Alex already voted, Joe is an I.
I.
I, Jacob's an I, I'm an I, so that is unanimous to approve item thirteen point two. Uh, sub, item number one for the recreation discounted programs. Um, with no prejudice against the other two items, which hopefully will start on our next day.
No, I think Katie, they're totally for your reasons to hold off on those, so. It's good. Are you leaving, Alex?
I am.
Have a good night.
My girlfriend goes to Bolton Bet on Tuesdays, the only night that she works, but of course, that's what we leave.
Are there guidelines, um, and maybe Colleen, you and I can talk about this, because you have, I'm sure a lot more knowledge about. See, maybe it's in the documents about what you spend the money on.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Everything we see here, obviously.
Well-defined guidelines, but then there's like little carve-outs that come along like, and some actually for senior center, only the senior center can spend it. Okay, give that example, because we're, we're doing that right now. Uh, so a lot of little chat congress come out once in a while, we, we welcome.
And then we've got eight hundred thousand after we, after these proposed. Little less than eight hundred, and how many, how many apps do we don't have, how much?
We have the night, all of that. All that, I mean. And then, and caps, you know, if there weren't eight hundo in there, there's, there's plenty in there. Um, we've had some exorbitant requests, uh, I'm sure, I'm sure. Uh, and then, you know, if, if, if we didn't have those and we were looking for it, we'd pull out of capital. Again, it's all responsible debt management. When I meet one-on-one, we'll talk about the triple A bond rating. Uh, that our town has and the importance of it. Yes, that's true, and maintaining it and, um, this all comes into play as we consider each thing that we wanna, uh, spend on.
Well, thank you very much, and I, I certainly look forward to revisiting uh, those two items at our next meeting once, uh, to answer questions so that everyone is comfortable with voting on what comes before us. So the next item on our agenda is appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. Um, thirteen A through J. Brian, do you have background you'd like to give us on thirteen A through J?
Uh, as you discussed, uh, there are many, uh, boards and commissions. And as a part of our process, uh, we have to reappoint, uh, today or consider reappointing uh, today. The list is here, I won't go through all of them. Uh, keep in mind that council, uh, council chair and vice chair and I will go through and look at cleaning up some of these appointments, um, as, some of these boards as they become, um, I guess, past their, their, their lead. So we'll look to clean up, uh, some of that.
So. Yes.
Is it, about our read, is F and G, have they been removed?
No, that's what I'd like to do now. Um, so the whether, first, before we go through this, um, we've been asked to withdraw the consideration of the reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission alternate and the reappointment of the Zoning Board of Appeals alternate. Um, so when we talk about a motion, it would be for items thirteen A through E and then HIJ. Are there any questions, comments on the reappointments we will be considering tonight? No, okay, so then is there a motion to approve the reappointment of items thirteen A through E? And then HI and J?
I move to appoint the suggested members of our line dinner packet. The items.
Thank you, Jacob, is there a second? Jen is seconding, is there any questions, any discussion before we vote? Okay, so we're gonna do a roll call vote, Colleen?
I.
Chris?
I.
Jen?
I.
Joe?
I.
Jake?
I.
And I am also an I, so that is unanimous. At this time, I would entertain a motion to add to our agenda, item thirteen K, which is the appointment uh, to fill the vacancy on the Board of Education. Second, so we have, uh, moved by Chris, seconded by Jacob. Is there any discussion about adding this item to the agenda? We're not actually voting on it, we're simply adding the item to the agenda right now. Any discussion? No, okay, so we're gonna roll call vote on adding this item to the agenda. Colleen?
I.
Chris?
I.
Jen?
I.
Joe?
Jacob?
And I am an I as well, so that is unanimous. Um, at this point, uh, we are considering the appointment, uh, to fill the vacancy on the Board of Education, uh, as, um, we know, uh, Jake now vacant, as he had to resign to serve on town council, um, and we have a letter to town clerk uh, from the chairperson of the town Republican Town Committee endorsing Rini Bissaw to fill that vacancy. Um, and we've been asked to vote on this prior to the first Board of Education meeting, so Jacob, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Are there any questions, concerns about this appointment? Yeah, go ahead.
Question or concern, but I will speak, you know, from experience, I've worked with Rini on the board for my first term, um, served from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one and was also on the board in Colchester. Um, she comes with a wealth of experience on those boards, um, I think she'll be a great asset on the Board of Education, so. Um, looking forward to, uh, council supporting her, they so choose.
Wonderful. I know that, um, I think this is a great, uh, step forward for the Board of Education to meet as a complete board. Uh, when they have their first meeting on the twenty ninth of November and, uh, I hope very much that this board, the Board of Education will be very collaborative as, as we will be. Um, and that this, this is a step towards that collaboration. Alright, so without any further discussion, we will do a is there a motion to approve the, uh, assign, the assignment of Rini Bissaw to the Board of Vacancy?
Uh, Jacob, I would to, uh, appoint Rini Bissaw to fill the Board of Education vacancy.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Go second? Any further discussion? Okay, we will do a roll call vote, Colleen?
I.
Chris?
I.
Jen?
I.
Joe?
Jake?
I.
And I am also an I, so that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, next.
Question, question asked is, when we talked about this, uh, this, the, um, this memo from Brian here, uh, about these vacancies? All, these are all, so after these reappointments, they're all still.
Just to point of clarification. The vacancies you've approved tonight are included on that memo. So they'll be removed.
Oh, so, oh, okay, so there, there, we will be, we just filled some of those vacancies.
The memo, the memo was showing the vacancies in entirety, you just moved to point them all, so they'll be removed from that memo.
Okay, so there's still, there's some.
But there's still, there's still a fair amount. There is still a fair amount and you know, unfortunately, we kind of run in that with those numbers. Um, it would be great to kind of double down and fill some of those, because some of those boards and commissions can't do a lot of business without membership, so.
Absolutely, thank you for that clarification, Sharon, I misunderstood. Alright, so now, um, I would ask that there is a motion to add to our agenda, item thirteen four. Which is the, uh, request from the Road Salt Task Force to, um, authorize the town manager to enter into a third agreement with Langdon Engineering and Environmental Services. Um, this is on the piece of paper that is in front of you all. So is there a motion to add item thirteen four to the agenda? Again, we're not by voting on this item now, we're simply adding it to our agenda. Thank you, Jen, is there a second?
Second.
Jacob, second? Is there any discussion about adding this to our agenda? Without any, uh, discussion then, I will do a roll call vote to add this item to our agenda, Colleen?
I.
Chris?
I.
Jen?
I.
Joe?
I.
Jacob?
I.
And I'm also an I, so unanimous, we are adding to our agenda. Go ahead, Brian.
The, sorry, the DPW Salt, uh, Ta- Task Force, um, has been working on this issue here in our town where, uh, some of our residents have had, uh, problems with the levels of sodium and chloride in their water. Department of Bi- the Connecticut Department of Environmental and Energy, uh, of Energy and Environmental Protection, DEEP got involved and began doing some of the testing and advising for us. At some point last year, DEEP said they were getting out of it and, um, gave us basically an order to hire, uh, an outside firm. Uh, we hired Langdon Engineering, a, a, uh, large firm in the United States, uh, that does this type of, uh, work. Uh, again, based on the order of DEEP, that has been, um, very, um, the, their work has been, um, very thorough and has provided the town with a lot of, uh, residents with a lot of, uh, well-needed uh, information, but they are not done. Um, we, this is time-sensitive. Uh, and we, we, because we have an important meeting coming up with DEEP, when we're gonna discuss, uh, some of the Langdon, uh, engineering reports that we have. Uh, but this'll cost, uh, our, our third agreement for them to keep working is, uh, fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, we've identified the money to pay for that, Lisa, would you like to talk about that?
No, she left.
Whoops, she left.
I can talk about it, Brian, if you want.
Mike's here, yes, I was gonna say, some detective, I.
Yeah, so, uh, we have been using a fund, a capital fund for most of this funding, it's actually a a testing, um, environmental fund. The money that is in there is actually, uh, money that we got back from our insurance company as an equity distribution. And every year we might get money back each year from our insurance company, so we put that money into that fund, because it's coming from our insurance company and this helps with testing and investigation, so most of it's coming from there, uh, pretty much all of it's coming from there, so, um, uh, there's a little leftover that will, uh, Lisa, will fi- will find, uh, a place for that, but the whole majority of, of it will be, be coming from that fund.
Also, we're looking to, in the next, uh, capital plan, identify, um, some monies moving forward. So much of what we're doing is, um, we don't, we don't just wanna test, we wanna provide solutions to our residents, um, we don't just wanna give them the tests that they are on your own. Um, and with that, we know there's gonna be some costs, so instead of, obviously, we've depleted the account that Mike just spoke of. Uh, but we're gonna need to identify funding moving forward, so, uh, working with Lisa and through our capital plan, we'll do exactly that with the DPW, like, leave Mike's office. Uh, Human Resources.
Alright. So I would imagine there might be some questions. Go ahead, Chris.
It's not really a question, I just, um, I think it's important that we have like no gap in, you know, dealing with this, and so I think it's important that we pass it, right, because if we don't, Langdon won't be attending this meeting with DEEP next week, is that?
Well, we'll cancel the meeting with DEEP, uh, and it wasn't exactly easy to put together. Um, and it's, you know, it's it's been dragging on for a long time, as Mr. Lapp was going to explain in a few minutes. Um, in his, uh, public comment, so, um, and, 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 yeah, I completely empathize with his, his concern and how long it takes, so. One of the things I was brought in here to do was to get, to, to really get to work on some of the lingering problems that have been sitting around here for a decade. Uh, this being one of the more important ones, and so I'm really just trying to, uh, hammer it through to, uh, resolution and solution to our residents.
Yeah, I agree.
Go ahead, Lisa has a question.
I'm sorry, I know you gave your.
No, no, there's lots of questions, lots of questions.
So this meeting next week, um, that Langdon would attend, is this, um, like between the Road Salt Task Force, or like who's, is it a public meeting? I'm just curious what the venue is.
No, it's, it's a meeting, uh, so DEEP is not aware, as we found out, and is tough to fathom, the steps we've taken here in town, uh, to work on this issue and to, and to let's just go into how responsible we are for, um, down Road Salt. Uh, and also to discuss the, the latest Langdon report with our attorneys on, on present there, so. Uh, that is the, the, the crux of the meeting of where we can explain and lay out all the stuff that we've done. Better than any town, dare I say in the state, um, we are more responsible in our salt application uh, than anyone, and the Langdon report, um, supports that, and, and, um, we wanna explain that to DEEP.
Okay. Alright, I'm, I agree with Chris, I think that this is important and should be continued, so I'll probably appropriate the money. I guess, my, my question, um, you know, I, I think as the council, we'd really get to kinda get up to speed with some of the details in general with this, because as you mentioned, it's been going on for quite some time and it's complicated, so I don't know if that's something we could consider for another agenda item or maybe just a, a standing item up.
When you come into my office, one, we'll go over it, uh, soup to nuts. Two, should you be so inclined, uh, we have several Langdon reports and older reports from, from years earlier. Uh, that you'll be able to, uh, delve into as much as you can tolerate. Um, a lot of it gets the conclusions are fantastic, but in the minutia, it's, it's very scientific, uh, but I'm happy to provide counsel.
Alright, it'd be good to get up to speed.
And I would also add that, um, I believe that the current configuration of the Road Salt Task Force is, uh, coming to a conclusion. Um, and that the Road Salt Task Force should recommend to the full council on next steps. Um, as DEEP becomes more involved in this process. So I agree, Jacob, I think it's great for us as council members to get a full update from the town manager, but, um, our community needs an update too.
Yeah.
And, and that might start with a public update to us as a council. Um, I think there are more steps that even, even than that, that needs to be added.
Yeah, isn't Langding gonna come and present to council themselves?
I don't think to council, I think, I think the task force, uh, was talking about a public meeting, not just to council, but full public forum, sorry, yeah.
I think that, that'd be very helpful and if they could break it down into plain English, because from what I understand, it's not a light read. So, that'd be very helpful.
Sure, Chris, I know you wanna talk, I just wanna make sure everybody else has a chance before I go.
So just a quick question, uh, does this report, this study also include ways to mitigate it going forward, that we don't have additional issues?
I wish, um, and, you know, we're, we're gonna look to identifying ways to mitigate it, and it depends on what you need mitigate what. I would say with you, Road Salt, we already are, and we're doing everything, uh, that DEEP DPH and everybody else recommends us to do, plus a little more. Uh, in regards to, uh, water softening systems, you know, they haven't provided very clear-cut recommendations, and that's one of our asks. Uh, moving forward and, and write what I'm saying, solutions. Uh, you know, if, if they're saying water softener systems are doing this, then okay, what's the solution here that we can provide to our residents? So, um, we have seen some successes, and if you read the reports, that people who have turned off their water softener systems have almost immediately, or within a year, seen vast improvements, um, to their water and, uh, in, in the areas affected as well, uh, the, the vineyards neighborhood and then others on Hope Coast Road, uh, where they've seen that. uh where they've seen that immediate uh change and and uh dare I say, my mother uh has the issue in her well also. Um and and you know, there, she's in the reports as well. Uh I shut off her system, her water is improving.
Uh, okay. Um so I'm sure the report has also a map of some sort that shows where and how many houses houses are affected. So we, I mean, I guess to both their points, you need to get caught up.
The maps and the reports.
Okay.
Um but they're they're topographical and not a lot of font, not not what we're used to looking at.
And my last question, does any of this have to do with like the change in the in the salts and the the brine that they're putting on the streets over, let's say, the past uh it's twenty years that, you know, fire departments have complained how it's corroding even even uh uh the the fire um
Fire hydrant.
Hydrants, thanks.
Tricky work.
Fire irons on the side of roads, I mean, it seems like a much more volatile type of uh chemical that you're using.
So I would encourage you to read uh the report, and the answer to that differs by location. Um depending on on the households and and what the the issue is. Um we, the town, follow the recommendations of DEEP, and there's a Yukon system called the Green Snow Pro system where they talk about different types of uh additives. We use one that I believe has molasses in it, and that helps it stick to the road as opposed to an another chemical. Uh who knows, maybe the fish are gonna get fat, I don't know uh what the effect is gonna be, but that's what's been recommended, that's what we employ, where our our pounds of salt per mile are lower than everyone, anyone around us. Um and lower than uh what is recommended to the point where, you know, we we have to, you know, keep the road safe. We have responsibility for people to get to work, to get food. Our first responders to respond and keep people safe. So um again, I encourage you to read that report, there are several, um and they are varying based on the location.
Okay, so we've been proactive and try to reduce the the effects of the salt on.
And then, and that's what our reading with DEEP is um moving forward, to to explain to them exactly that.
Thanks.
Do you have any questions?
No further questions.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry, I just have one question. Um and if this is too much for sake, that's fine. Um I did read the most recent Langdon report, and it is complicated. My only question as pertains to Lang- Langdon's meeting next week is what is DEEP's role in all this? I know that they did a study before Langdon, I think, got involved, and Langdon, we got Langdon involved to sort of get deeper into the weeds, but like, I guess, what is the meeting next week with DEEP, bringing up just be like, what is their role and process?
Their role is to ensure that we, the municipality, are not a um affecting people's well, and if we are, that we're responsibly managing that. Um step out of that role to actually do the testing and such. And if you look at the reports, there's an older DEEP report, which is um very shallow compared to the Langdon report.
Yeah.
And um you know, without besmirching the efforts of the state, um I have much more confidence in the Langdon report. And we could tell almost immediately once we hired Langdon that they were doing a much deeper and more scientific dive into these uh situations. Uh DEEP's role is more of big brother keeping an eye on things and to make sure uh we're doing things right. And you think it'd be easy to put that out, but it's, you know, again, it's been hard to get them on the table, they're understaffed, and they get it, uh but we're doing the best we can.
And so their solutions that we'd be looking to ultimately to help these people who don't have pot of water, is that coming, will that ultimately come from like Langdon or or DEEP, or DEEP is just sort of like?
We're gonna be above, DPH.
Okay.
Eastern Highlands Health District, you know, that's what we're looking to do then. And we 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 are asking Langdon and our attorney to come up with those types of solutions. So you're you're hitting the nail on the head. And it's gonna vary household to household depending on what the situation is. You know, if you look at Mr. Lappin, he's in at one of the steepest grades in town.
Yeah.
Um and then others are are different and in neighborhoods littered with water softening systems uh to a fault.
Yeah, thanks.
Colleen, I'm sorry, did you have any questions?
Um no, I'm good, Katie, thank you.
So, does anybody else have any questions? So, all right. So then um I would enter payment a motion um on item thirteen four, which is a cons- a resolution to authorize the town manager to enter into a third agreement with Langdon Engineering and Environmental Services as outlined in this new um agenda item, which is an agreement for up to fifteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Jacob made the mo- second motion, Jen seconded the motion. Is there any further questions, discussion before we vote? Okay, so we will do a roll call vote. Colleen?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I am also an ayes, so that is unanimous. Uh thank you, everyone, for your uh flexibility as we made some adjustments to our agenda, and we'll go back to the published agenda, which is item fourteen, old business, and there is none, so I, yeah. Now we go to the town manager's report. So as promised, town manager Foley has this opportunity to fully update us on all things Talons.
I apologize for being verbose through the first hour and a half of this meeting, but I'm trying to explain um some background prior to each item to to bring you up to speed, so I'll try to run through this uh as fast as I can and really with the highlights. I encourage you to uh at your own leisure uh go through this document um and read uh and read some of the highlights uh for the minutes. Uh we have several openings uh to include a public safety officer, firefighter, uh an assistant director of human services. Uh we've made some progress uh in that as we're in the final interviews uh for that, and again, you'll meet our our human services director, that Delde does a fantastic job on so many levels. We have a revenue collector, also known as a tax collector, opening, we're we're receiving some good uh applications uh for that as we speak. Uh we have a director of library services, uh process that is ongoing and a a a labor position within the library as well. We we are getting um good applications for that already. Uh in in the interim, Barbara Pettijohn, the library director, as I mentioned before, will be working on a part-time basis to bridge the gap until we have a full-time uh library director. Uh I wanna say that the the town did a great job on the twenty-first uh of October with the electronic recycling event, it uh yielded nineteen thousand pounds of electronics, and I wanna thank the CERT team. Uh for those who don't know, the CERT team are a group of volunteers, um trained volunteers managed by the uh by our uh emergency management director. But they also assist with uh events like the recycling event or uh major events on the grid and such, they're they're absolutely fantastic, all volunteers. Um you guys, we we talked about some of the openings, the Board of Assessment and Appeals is the 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 most prevalent one. We're short three members, our assessor's office asked us to really start pushing it, I mentioned it here today, so then it's uh here for everyone, or it's it's put out there for everyone to hear. We've also done some social media and some um on eGlass two SBD, I think we did, right? Uh we we, so we're really pushing to try to get people on the Board of Assessment and Appeals. Uh as new counselors, you have new friends and neighbors that we don't have access to, and you wanna ask them and anyone, if it would be appropriate, we'd uh love to have somebody on that. Um, let's kinda run through here. Um you'll see with our library, I I had no idea when I got here how great it is, other than mothers would take our granddaughter to the library often and and got great joy out of that, but there's so many programs that go on down there and and please uh read through, there's a lot of knitting, there's there's a lot of interesting stuff comes in and out of there. There's a Festival of Trees right down there, but uh down there now, um and and basically, it's a fundraiser where you buy uh a little tree or a little holiday celebration type of item, and it benefits uh the friends of the town and public library. You'll see there's three uh three um boards or I guess um three groups that support the public library external to the town. Um and they do a fantastic job providing funding, they cannot provide funding them out of our uh budget, but they provide funding for other things and they do a great job. Um I hope you guys look into how many more uh programs they offer down there. Our Economic Development Commission is currently there's a, there's a technology campus zone, basically betwixt um the the, I guess, the old seven eleven I'm dating, so shopping and up towards Johnson Autobody. Uh and relooking at the zoning there, that it was, it was planned along, long before I got here to the technology campus zone, it didn't really pan out that way. Uh they're looking to readjust the zoning, they have a public, uh some members, businesses uh in the area are coming in their next meeting, I believe. Uh in fact, it's the, is that the Monday one? SPD, I think, that's why we can't do it on Monday. The reason we can't do the meeting our next meeting on Monday is because EDC has their meeting um that with with the zoning to pro- uh provide feedback. Uh one of the things I didn't mention is um the Girl Scouts of America, the here in Connecticut, had a lot of properties, beautiful properties throughout the state, lakes, ponds, forests, et cetera. Um where they'd have camps and meetings and they would use for their Girl Scout um activities. The Girl Scouts started to sell off over the last couple of years, many of those properties around the state. We here in the town of Talon were fortunate enough for that not to sell our property and in fact invest millions in it, and it will be their main um focal point or camp for um the Girl Scouts moving forward, and it is way up in, if you throw a rock, you're gonna hit Stafford, it's that that far corner, way up off of, I believe, Plains Road up there. Um it's far up. Uh they are redoing so much and working, uh we we, it's very important to me. I did a lot of work with these same folks uh in a in a previous lifetime, and uh I wanna I wanna see too is it is it's success here in town. Obviously, it'll bring people here, it's in into town more. It's it's um cabins, it's a facility, it's a kitchen, um it's regrading, it's a camp. Um it's beautiful waterfront, all of that, so it's it's been a lot. Our Inlands and Wetlands Commission received an application, our fire marshals working with them, our engineers working with them, our building inspectors working with them. Um meeting to to make sure um it it has success. We try to do this for a lot of things. Santini, you know, the kind of the same thing, we don't wanna see a failure here where someone pulls over the town for lack of um help from town staff, and 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 you will not see that. Um so that is ongoing. The Agricultural Commission uh did a great job this summer with the farmers market, that is new to this town. Uh when I was hired, I was tasked with adding more events here uh on the town. Farmers Market uh being one of them, and it was very, very, very successful. I thank the PCC, the Permanent Celebration Committee, you'll get to know them. Uh and the Agricultural Commission, you'll get to know them. All of them were very active in making sure the farmers market was a success, and we look forward to doing it uh next year. Uh so I thank everyone that that came to our uh grand opening of our multi-use pickleball tennis ball courts at Crandall's uh last week, where Lieutenant Governor came. Um we received four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in uh state state funding, it's a small-town economic assistance uh program. And uh we also got, found out that we got an award for next year for three hundred and thirty-two thousand for improvements to Garing Cove uh up there. There's an ongoing uh build of the new fire station at three, Station Three Forty on Garing Road. Uh yeah, I encourage you to to drive by and take a look. They have poured the floor of it, so now we have um starting to take shape. There has been delays um in delivery of the actual, it's a metal building, there has been um delays with that, and it's, we do anticipate, I believe, in the next month or so. Um it's been unpredictable delays uh for your own knowledge of paint factory, the Sherwin-Williams factory blew up in Texas, and that's where our metal building was getting painted, and of course, it it, you can't, you can't you just can't predict this stuff, and only us. Um Google it. Um you can see the explosion. Um but it it's, in effect, there's some, it's it's things like that that slowed us down. Again, not for lack of of staff effort by any stretch, the fire chief. Um certainly, Megan Masa is the project manager, um and our building inspector and our engineer are there daily, sure to the chagrin of uh the contractor, but they're keeping an eye and doing the best they can on on everything that's moving forward there. Uh I don't think I have too much more of note. Our ladder trucks here, uh again, I mentioned earlier about how our fire chief saved this money, and we had marked out in a few years, two point one million dollars for a new ladder truck um here in town, and you may say to yourself, as I did, we don't have any buildings over two stories, why would we need a ladder truck? Um but as I learned, um our houses are pretty far from the road, and the ladder um is more important to go out as opposed to up here in the town of Talons. Um and hence, that's why. However, um in my discussions and in my request, Chief, to be a fiduciary of the town in in going through the process of our apparatus and how much we have and when they're replaced, um he had his own, came up with an idea of looking at this used one. To give you an idea, these trucks, the last one, I believe, was purchased in nineteen ninety-three. Uh and it's for sale as we speak, so we get a lot of years on these trucks. Um this is a two thousand and six, completely refurbished, obviously completely tested um that we got for, instead of two point one, we got it for around five hundred thousand dollars, roughly, and then maybe put another fifty or a hundred into it for radio uh equipment to get it up to speed here and then get it shipped up here from uh Texas. Uh so, I I again, I can't thank the fire chief enough for removing that debt off the shoulders of all of us, us and our families here in town, um but we'll be starting to do some to let the public know that we have this truck, that it is responsible spending and not something that we took um lightly. Also, our DPW director wants to remind everyone to remove the portable basketball hoops that are in the road, so that our uh new cloud truck should be approved. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any, any questions for the town manager?
None.
I have, I have questions.
Oh, darn.
You don't get off the hook that easily.
Sorry, um the Reese to Crofts America event, which you actually mentioned earlier, what, when is that event?
Gee whiz, December thirteenth.
December sixteenth.
Thanks.
At noon.
Where is it?
In the Sire Mill Road Cemetery Fair, and um you know, it's been an ongoing uh fundraising project to get wreaths for all the veterans um um graves. Go ahead, Sam.
I think it's at Valley View. Off of Baxter.
Can, can you make sure that the council members are invited? And I would just
Oh, yeah.
that um thanks to the uh efforts and energy of councilperson Uticek, the previous council did uh purchase a wreath, right, Colleen?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, so um the previous council purchased one, so we, you know, you get to take credit for it and uh hopefully you'll come, if you, if you're available to come to that event. Um, do you have an update, Brian, on the public safety apparatus study? How's that going?
It's going well, we have two of three um bids, yes, I believe, uh they ranged from forty-five to seventy-five thousand, we are waiting on a third bid uh to come in, all the, all the bidder, all the um um firms that have submitted a bid were recommended to us by by a coroner.
Wonderful.
Uh Mike is entirely handling.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
Sorry, has the previous council, like, already voted to approve, like, allocate funds for that?
Yep.
Okay.
Through our.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like, they was a dedication for this.
December sixteenth, Sarah, about that.
You you will get plenty of notice, and I've been chasing down this to get you there too.
Yes. Um, I noticed on our calendar that the Firehouse Subcommittee has a meeting scheduled for the sixteenth, or in two days. Is that meeting canceled?
It's been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Um and Brian, do you have any update for us on filling the resident state trooper vacancy?
More, more on that when we meet one-on-one with all of you, but um yes, the the Kevin Ackland, who was here in town and did a fantastic job, and and you know, I speak of public trust, he certainly maintained his public trust here in town. Uh unfortunately, uh congratulations to him, retired. Katie extolled the virtues of them in the proclamation. Um feeling it's not so easy, that is an agency, um I just came from there when I was hired here, that is incredibly understaffed.
Yeah.
Incredibly young and um inexperienced, and to be an administrative resident trooper, as a trooper Ackland was, you want somebody with years, and it's and it's hard to explain the dynamic, but at two o'clock in the morning, there's a major incident in town, can a young trooper call a seasoned detective or the Major Crimes Division and get the exact answers that we need? Probably not. Uh but someone like Kevin Ackland could just make that phone call, or something else we're considering is actually a sergeant, um as our staff is so young here. Um as well as to to fill up shoes, so they put it out to uh they put out a uh, they posted it internally, they we, they had two applications, um they kept me appraised in the process as one of their asks. Um and hopefully, they'll they'll pick a candidate, if not, we might look to the sergeant, but we're also um, there's a negotiation process for some other asks that we have. pick a candidate. If not, we might look to the sergeant, but we're also, um, there's a negotiation process for some other asks that we have. In your packet, you will see an update from the Connecticut State Police on basically the police report here in town. Coming from professional police departments and working with them all over the state. The crime report we get here in town is incredibly archaic and uninformative to the ultimate degree. I can't tell you how, how many burglars we had last year compared to this year. I can't tell you if crime is up or crime is down. I don't know. Need to do that. They have the ability to capture that data and provide it for us. So one of the asks I'd have them is, is once a quarter, um, come in here and provide us with a crime update. Were there lots of burglaries this past quarter compared to last quarter, this month, last month? Were they in this part of town, that part of town? Are we staffing to address those things? It's called ComStat in Policeland. Um, and, you know, some, some towns have very elaborate and very informed and very public reports in town, so they have those numbers. We don't know if we need more cops, we don't know if we need less cops, we don't know. And, and we're just kept in the dark here, um, trying to shine light on that. Obviously that will take some very minimal man hours, considering the, uh, next gen reporting system the state police has, they should be able to cultivate that fairly easily and present it to us. They have agreed to do, uh, exactly that as we work through an open contract that we have. We'll get more into that, um, when we get together.
Thank you.
For most.
Yes. Did you have a follow-up on that, Chris?
I just have one question. How much can, can, like, control do we have as a town negotiating with the state police as opposed to like, because I know that there are resident state trooper programs like all over the state, right? Is it like a standardized thing or we actually have some, like, we're able to say, if you need this information, they have to provide it? We could get it in a contract.
In regards to what? The?
Like, like, like.
Crime data? We have some ability to do that and some pressures. I mean, public pressure is one, you know, you know, I'm saying it now, the crime report stinks and we need a better one. And, and just by saying this publicly, they're, because they have agreed to fix it. Um, the problem is it sets precedent and other towns might want to do the same and, and so, uh, it creates issues. As far as leveraging other things, um, you know, we know people, um, and do the best we can between myself, Katie and Tammy, we got a lot of bases covered, so.
Um, can you speak really briefly on the, uh, adequacy of trooper coverage? With the, uh, retirement of Kevin Ackland, do we, is our community still safe?
Our community is still safe, yes. Um, they, they are, they are covering the hours as best they can with the troopers they have. Uh, but keep in mind that entire, our troop C is way, way less troopers than we had ten years ago there. And I won't get into, um, which administrations kicked the can down the road, but, um, they were provided with that information over a decade. On how to fulfill those, uh, keep those positions moving forward and now they're faced with the absolute shortage of cops and a society that doesn't need a cop anymore. So some problems that we're dealing with.
Thank you.
We're still safe. This is a very safe town.
Yeah, thank you.
That's why I watch you see on so many media.
Mostly I, I wanted you to say that out loud, so thank you.
Very safe town. I'm, I'm not a crime expert, but I'm not bad.
No, um, and, and one more, uh, town management type update. Um, I know that we were waiting for, uh, the conclusion of the engineering assessment for the jail museum. How's that going?
Swimming lane. I could use that adjective.
Awesome.
So we, we have, uh, the town of Talon owns the, uh, jail museum down the street here. Um, it's old and needs repair. Um, but we just can't go and hire, nor at builder school there and swing a hammer and, and get it up to speed. It has to, uh, because it's the historic district, uh, without getting too complicated, only a historic engineer and architect can devise the, um, design those plans. Also because of that, you know, things need to be done in a certain way to bring them up to speed. Um, we used a grant to hire an, an engineer and architect to, um, basically draw plans to make, uh, to, um, rehab the jail museum. Currently that, the last, last check was over five hundred thousand dollars to bring the jail museum up, which we certainly, um, hadn't been anticipated. Uh, so we will be looking at options. Uh, I'm sorry, I was ending up, looking at options, presenting them to you and you'll weigh them, uh, in the, in the coming, uh, years. So five hundred thousand dollars, and again, that's just really externally in the few things. Uh, we do want to, you know, that, one of the things is a handicap ramp. Some are deck repairs, you know, those, those cantilever decks that go out over on the outside and some of the external stuff. So it's, it's in need of repair and we in the town have decided, do we even want to retain this building? Do we want to, as taxpayers, pay for it and now we're going to move forward? So, uh, not to mention the daily cost of running the building, gas, oil, electricity, you might leave anything out.
Water.
Water, sewer guests, water. Um, so there, there are, there are costs involved. Currently it's being leased out for, um, one dollar a year. So it's going to take us five hundred thousand years, um, to recover that money.
Thank you. Those were, I, I had the advantage of having a running list from previous council meetings, so, uh, thank you for, uh, letting me go back through my old list. Does anybody else have any questions on the town manager's report?
I, Katie, I'm sorry, I think, Katie, I do, I think Jacob has his hand up first.
No, I just said I'm going to stay in the bar one-on-one, so.
Okay, yeah, please, yeah, go ahead, Colleen.
Mine doesn't have to do with the town management report, but I'll just, um, since Sarah Beth is there, as far as, you know, I think facility tours, a definitely, um, big advantage of all counslers can do that, so, um, Brian, should I email Sarah Beth on that, on, you know, how to get that set up? Or is there dates in mind that your manager's office already has planned for facility tours to the fire station, public works, um, and other departments?
You can email me, uh, CC, uh, my number one, that's fine.
So email the number one, which is Sarah Beth.
Of course.
All right, perfect, because I think those are so valuable, especially coming up with capital stuff, because, you know, seeing things in person versus seeing them on paper are totally two different things. So, all right, Sarah, I'll email you tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good, Colleen.
Thanks, Sarah Beth.
Sure.
All right, thank you, Colleen. Are there any other items on the town manager's? Okay, so the next item on our agenda is adoption of minutes. Uh, these are the minutes from the October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, um, town council meeting that are in your packets. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes, you know, October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three council meeting? So. Is there a second? Then seconded, any questions? Corrections, thoughts on these minutes? No, I read them. There is always, very good, thank you, Lisa. Without any discussion, then we will do a roll call vote. Uh, this is in favor of approving these minutes. Colleen?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Joe?
I'm going to abstain since, or, is it abstains, correct term? Yeah, since I, I wasn't, uh, attending the meeting.
Sure, you, you don't have to abstain because you didn't attend it, but you asked again.
Oh.
And Jacob is an I, I am also an I, so, um, that is approved. The next item is correspondence council, where on item seventeen, we're getting there. That's what I, that's what we can say. Per our rules of procedure, a member of council reports on correspondence at each regular meeting and at each, uh, public hearing. I had been doing this the last two years and I am looking forward to passing this responsibility on to one of you lovely people. Uh, but for today, I will tell you that, uh, in the last, uh, since our last town council meeting, there were three emails. They came into the town council email account. One was on electric vehicles, one was on municipal heating regulations, and one was on the solar panels that are being considered at the UCC church. So if one of you would like to take on this responsibility going forward, please let me know. I, I look forward to passing this on.
I think Jacob, uh, personally would do a great job because I've seen him done it in action on the Board of Ed, but that's just my personal.
That happens, doesn't it? All right.
Maybe Alex wants to do it.
It's not that hard. You just keep track of the emails that come in. It's, you know, anyway, um, three is a good, like, that's a pretty average. Okay, so, uh, the next item on the agenda is the Chairperson's Report. I am promising to debrief. I just wanted to thank everyone for your support for me as Town Council Chair. Uh, the previous council worked very well together as a seven-person team and I look forward to continuing that type of relationship with this new council. As, uh, our town manager said, they set very high standards, our previous team. It was awesome to work with all six of my colleagues there and I know that we can meet, uh, those standards and work together for the next few years. So I, we're going to do it. I'm, I'm confident. Um, I wanted to say that I would like to continue the tradition of holding a chair hour, uh, once a month. So my first chair hour will be Thursday, December seventh, at six-thirty in the library study room. I am working with, uh, Sarah Beth to make sure that I continue that. Um, I would invite anyone who wants to come sit at a chair hour with me, of course. You are welcome. I'm going to try to see if, uh, other, um, boards, uh, chairs or, or other members of other boards want to come sit too. Uh, maybe I'll think of something else to make it fun, but, uh, there we go. Uh, so the next item on our agenda is communications and petitions from council persons. This is your opportunity, uh, to, to say things, if you want to say anything. Anyone want to say anything?
I'll say something.
Please, Colleen.
Say something from Blueberry Hill Road. First of all, again, a, sorry I'm not there in person. I actually have COVID, believe it or not, my first meet-in. I want to be hanging out and sharing these, these moments with you guys. Totally was supposed to be nominating Katie. I apologize, technical difficulties with my son's computer, but I, um, I look forward to working with all you guys. Like Katie said, we had an exceptional crew the last two years, but I can already tell just from the start here that it's going along just good so far, so, um, we're going to do good things together. That's it.
Thanks, Colleen. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm just excited to be here as well and, uh, looking forward to working well. Like, oh, Joe.
Awesome. So we have made it to, uh, item twenty, ooh, on our agenda, which is public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council. There's a three-minute limit for this, uh, item. Uh, we will alternate between the room and the Zoom. If you are on Zoom and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand or press star nine. And we shall start with the room. Is there anyone who wants to participate, George? Please? So excited to see you.
Yeah, you'll all see me around, but I guess I'm in the distance that way. George Elrich, Thirty-Six Fishing Game Road. Uh, I just want to welcome you all and you'll be so happy to see me because I have stupid questions sometimes. Um, Brian, my question to you is, uh, have we, with, winter right around the corner, we come up with anything different we're going to do to the roads? Or we're still waiting for these stupid reports to tell us what to do? For fifty years, my father put sand on the roads and everybody seemed to be happy with it, the state. Everybody else came up with all this other stuff and said, it's great. Except that everybody's complaining it's ruining their cars and their trucks and all this other stuff. So there's some corrosive mess, but, and you're talking about putting something sticky on it. Maybe we can add some stickiness to the sand because that's the one thing they complained about, the sand was blowing off. I remember when it was really cold out, so. Have we come up with anything for different this year or are we still going to keep making the problem worse? If there is a problem.
Um, I will answer.
Sure, please.
We don't come up with those, is the answer. That's not the town. It's not our purview to decide. Um, we can ask and we follow the recommendations, uh, deep. Um, and they told us to follow the Green Snow Pro, uh, system. We are looking into a sand-salt combination in, in, in areas where it's, uh, where the wells could possibly be affected, uh, but we're working through that with Lapp, with Langdon and our, um, attorney. Uh, I understand the sand request, but, uh, it's been proven not to be the most efficient. You know, but those are, those are decisions for the most part outside of town and we have to consider liability on a lot of other factors as well.
Yeah, and I realize that Talon has a lot of hills. But like you say, if you come up with something that maybe makes it, like you were talking about your molasses, maybe there's something out there that can make the sand a little sticky.
They look at it every, every year, we're looking, um, we, we attended the Green Snow Pro training and look at what's recommended, uh, to the town. Thanks, George.
Thank you. I'll see you all again next week, two weeks.
Two weeks, two days.
Yeah, there you go, absolutely. Okay, so next we will go to Zoom. Uh, MG has their hand up next.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, uh, my name is Melanie Gooden again, four oh six Buff Cap Road. Um, I am one of those houses that's on the Langdon report as we were talking about. I have the advantage of having testing done to my house for years prior to the new brine that was put down. So you can see a good history of my house at four oh six. Um, I actually bought my house in two thousand and eighteen. The previous homeowner had opened a case with Eastern Highland District. Unbeknownst to me, we bought the house, did not realize the, the levels were so high until we moved in and our heater broke. Our pipes started turning green. We had problem after problem and we continue to have, you know, have to drink water that's not from our faucet. Um, I do appreciate you guys having this in the agenda. I appreciate all the people that are here. Sean, obviously for really championing this and everybody else as well. Um, but, um, I just want to ask two questions. If ARPA funds could be used, since ARPA does have the guidelines that waters, one of the eligible funding, um, reasons for funding, um, could something be done such as, um, obviously talking to the other states, listening to the Langdon? Again, I appreciate you, we, um, approved the funding for that, um, continuing to work with them. And, um, just awareness. So if ARPA has, if you have ARPA funds, could you possibly offer an opportunity for testing done for houses? Because that is a big, um, stop from everybody get testing their own houses. Is it's like a hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred dollars for testing? I think having awareness, um, showing transparency, um, will, will really, um, move your, move your agenda forward, working with other states. Um, and keep looking for solutions. You know, obviously the numbers have gone down, but there's been less snow. So that means less brine. So, um, you can't really look at things. We have a couple of good years of a lot of snow. We might be in the same situation. So again, I appreciate all your time. Um, you know, I do ask that you do look at all the houses that maybe haven't been tested, particularly the firehouse that's right near my house. You know, I don't know, um, over on Plains Road, who knows what's, what kind of water they have. So it's a bigger problem and it's a state problem and I hope that it can be, continue to be elevated, um, through the proper channels. Thank you so much.
Thank you. From the room. From the Zoom. Sean.
Hello, Sean Lappin, one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. I had an entire final speech prepped and now I hear that there will be, there will be a third Langdon report. What will this new report do? What properties will be discussed in this new report? I know that there were some discrepancies with the Vinnion report in relation to the deep report, but that has not been the case with my property. Road salt has not been excluded from causing my well problems. Also, I hear the task force is now looking to be ended and concluded. What happened to potentially adding public members to the Road Salt Task Force to add in that? Take, add in public participation? I have had multiple studies done on my property, namely the Apex Labs Report, multiple deep studies and, and conclusions, and a large part of the first Langdon Report, all dedicated to my property, along with multiple water tests over a period of years. And yet, here we are with no solution and no timeline for anything being implemented. If any town council members would like a one-on-one with me, I'm welcome to meet either online or offline to discuss this. While I appreciate that Brian and Mike Wilkinson have a lot of this information, they do not have, have everything that I do. For example, I have estimates at what it would cost to get public water to my property, around a million dollars. And the cost to put in a whole, a house reverse osmosis system, along with the engineered plans for the dispersal system for the wastewater. For those of you that do not know, a reverse osmosis system forces water through a membrane, which then gets potable water, typically at a one-to-four, one-to-five, one-to-four ratio. typically at a one-to-four, one-to-five, one-to-four ratio. One gallon of good water for every four gallons of wastewater, AKA brine, that now needs to be discharged. In talking to Eastern Highlands Health District, that discharge cannot be located close to your current well for fear of recontamination. I would be given no variance for this whatsoever. And the amount of equipment that's needed for this, because this is a whole-house RO, would be substantial. I would need to lose square footage in my house and reconfigure my mechanical room in order to in, to, to include these devices. And obvious, and at a cost of around fifty thousand dollars, give or take. And I would also have a law, a permanent loss of part of my house, which would devalue it. I would like to remind the council that, that specifically for my property, a claim against the town has already been filed on my behalf of my property, which was not done by myself. And my property has already met the deductible for the town. This means that the subsequent work that is done in the furtherance of trying to solve my problem will not impact the town's final, financial situation. I am dejected, annoyed, frustrated, and even angry to hear that we are getting another report, but I have not heard any information regarding potential remedies. I would like to suggest to the town, buy my property at a fair market value and let me get out. Put some pickleball courts there, because at this point, I think that leveling my house, grading the property with the hopefully new use grade of the town purchases, and building courts would likely happen sooner than getting me potable water. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Well, since we don't have anyone in the room, we'll go back to Zoom. Claudette?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Claudette Morehouse, eighty-nine Merlot Way, Tallent. Um, I, I am in the vineyards. Um, I just want to give kudos to Sean. He's, he pretty much summed it all up. I'm looking forward actually to working with the town council on this issue, but I have been appalled that the town seems to be so dismissive of the Connecticut deep reports. They have done the testing and they have done the work. Langdon is taking the deep report and they're rewriting the facts to create another town favored report. Langdon has incorrect facts regarding my property, which I will challenge the town report on those issues. If water seems to be improving, I will cite the very mild winters, which result in less road treatments. Water softeners are regenerating per gallon, per so many gallons um use regardless. And the only difference is winter applications. I am looking forward to further discussions that I would hope the town, moving forward, would include the residents with this issue. Just to note that the consultants has done no testing in the vineyards. So I would like to see them do their own testing before dismissing the results from the deep report, who has actually done the work. This has been a long road, and since water softeners have been around for decades, and the issue, and this issue has been for six years. I would hope, moving forward, realistic solutions would be put forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudette. Did you get, I'm sorry, did you get Claudette's um information? Thank you. I'm sorry, missed that. Uh, are there any other areas of, anyone else interested in public participation? Anyone else? Okay. So we have uh reached our final item on our agenda, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Hello.
Thank you, Jen. Is there a second?
A second motion.
Second. Is there objection to adjournment? Objection, any objection? So without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Good job.
Thank you.